All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We are going to, uh, this is our city council meeting September twenty-fifth, just shortly after five thirty. And as a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give to the clerk prior to the item. Mr. Donahue, can we please get roll call?
Councilmember Yao?
Here.
Councilmember Tesari?
Here.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Present.
Mayor Protan Plot?
Here.
Mayor Rigby?
Here.
And we will be going to closed session. Um, Mr. Donahue, do we have any requests to speak for the closed session portion of the agenda?
No, Mayor.
All right, uh, at this time, the council will be recessing to closed session. Ms. Vega, can you please introduce the items or item?
Yes, we have one item, a conference with real property negotiators for parcel eight of parcel map three seven four two nine, which is more commonly known as the city-owned portion of the Hamner Place, um, development, future development, with your negotiator being the city manager and the negotiating, uh, party, Eastvale Palace LLC.
Great, thank you. We'll be adjourning to our closed session. All right, we are going to, uh, we have just returned from closed session. And if I can, I would like to ask Ms. Vega, will you please report the action taken during closed session?
Yes, thank you. Um, on motion of councilmember Plot, seconded by councilmember Tesari, the council voted unanimously to approve an exclusive negotiation agreement for the subject property identified on the agenda with the negotiating party, who, um, I should, should clarify for the record, though. They asked at the last minute after the agenda, uh, to go out to, to change their name, but the actual people involved are, are the same as who's on the agenda, so that agreement is public record. Anyone who'd like to view it.
Thank you. All right, we are going to, uh, call our regular meeting to order. And, um, starting off, we will have our invocation by Pastor Rob Norris, please.
As we pray, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together, Lord. We pray for the city of Eastvale, Lord, may your hand be upon it. Lord, we are so grateful and so thankful for the opportunities that we have here to call this home. But we pray for the families, we pray for the city council as they go through this meeting. Lord, we pray over their agenda, Lord, that we would not get in front of you, that you would guide us, direct us, give us the will, the wisdom and the knowledge that we need to endure the tasks that you put before us. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Thank you very much for that. And now we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by councilmember Lorimer.
Please rise and join me in saluting our country's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to our additions and revisions portion. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mr. Donahue, do we have anything that staff has requested to add?
No, Mayor.
Council, is there anything that you would like to add or revise? With nothing being said, we will move on to our presentation and announcements. And item five point one is an update by Eastvale Public Library Branch Manager, Felicia Chen. Ms. Chen, will you please provide us your update?
Good evening, your mayor and city council members. First, the library would like to, um, note that we've had a success, successful summer reading program this year. Altogether, uh, we had a total of three hundred and four children, as well as sixty-eight teens and adults sign up. Out of those numbers reported, we had a total of sixty-nine children and nineteen teens and adult complete their whole program. Um, the summer reading program would not be su- as successful without our sponsors from Island's Yogurtland, Chipotle, Little Caesar's, Corky's, Applebee's and many more. Without their continued, uh, sponsorship, the summer reading program would not be the same. Secondly, on August twenty-second, the Friends of the Library hosted their first ever fundraising event with Miguel's Juniors. Um, it was very successful in the event that we had ended up raising a total of fifty-three dollars that night. We are hoping that this is the one of many fundraising opportunities that the Friends of the Libraries will continue to host. The library, as well as the Friends of the Library, thanks the community for their continued support. Please look for more fundraising events in the near future and we appreciate any and all, uh, community support. Lastly, I would like to announce that the Eastvale Public Library has a new children's services librarian. Her name is Alma Martinez and she is also able to speak, uh, fluent in Spanish. We hope the community welcomes Alma. Family Storytime will resume at the end of October. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Any questions? All right, we will move on to item number five point two. It's a presentation on the proposed bus route by Riverside Transit Authority Director of Service Planning and Scheduling, Joe. And I apologize for your last name in advance.
Forgerini it is.
Forgerini.
You got it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Rigby, and, uh, good evening. I'm, as announced, Director of Service Planning and Scheduling for Riverside Transit Agency, Joe Forgerini. Thank you for the opportunity to present on Riverside Transit Agency's program for FY twenty. Uh, if we can move on to the, oh, perfect. Firstly, give you a quick summation of our current activities in the city. We began this fiscal year with two routes operating. One in north-south alignment linking Eastvale, Norco and Corona, our Route Three. The second Route Twenty-nine, which is our, uh, east-west alignment linking Eastvale, Rupert Valley and Riverside. So, uh, out of those two routes, we have a s- a total of thirty-three bus stops served within the city. We carry about two hundred and fifty passengers per day, uh, using the stops in the city. And, uh, that's on weekdays, weekends about eighty, on a Saturday about sixty on a Sunday. Uh, the big news for, uh, the presentation tonight is that we plan this fiscal year on launching a third route for Eastvale. It'll be known as our Route Four. It will be another north-south alignment, Eastvale, Norco, Corona, and, uh, looking to launch in May of twenty twenty with a focus on Limonite Avenue, Archibald Avenue and River Road. So in terms of Route Four, the reason, uh, we're moving into a third route is, uh, we simply cannot serve the full city of Eastvale efficiently now that it's grown out to the western extremities, uh, even, uh, west further than Archibald Avenue. We really cannot do all the work required in the city with Route Three. It would just make that route, uh, ineffective in serving the remainder of the city's population. Uh, the service Route Four is proposed to link through to Corona, so it will give you a, uh, regional linkage at Corona to the rest of our RTA network and also to the MetroLink network through North Main Corona Station. Uh, it also, internal to the city, will also link, uh, into here at Limonite and Hamner, the, uh, busy commercial area here. Also, the Goodman Center at, uh, Amazon Eastvale where it will terminate. And, uh, obviously it'll be a, uh, a future, uh, link with the proposed, uh, the Merge Development at Limonite and Archibald and, uh, other, uh, existing commercial, uh, development along Limonite and Archibald Avenue. In terms of service, we're looking for this route to begin as a weekday service. Traditionally, we launch routes, new routes as weekday service. Once they've proven that, we can move on to weekend service as well. Uh, in terms of stops, we'll have a stop every quarter to a third of a mile throughout this corridor. Uh, usually it'll be located at the signalized intersections along Limonite and, uh, along Archibald. So there'll be, uh, quite good accessibility. Uh, and again, we will have four new stop pairs on Limonite Avenue, plus the, the additional stop pair at the Merge once that development is, is built. And, uh, Archibald Avenue, we're looking for seven new stop pairs. So, uh, just a quick overview, uh, visually of the alignment. Uh, it's a very fast direct corridor through to, uh, Corona. Uh, it also gives residents of cities of Corona and Norco the opportunity to come into Eastvale. So, you know, we expect flows in both directions. I'm hoping for just under three hundred riders a day for this route and hoping at least a hundred and twenty of those would be, uh, in the Eastvale community. So again, we're looking to implement in May of twenty twenty. Um, we have considerable amount of bus stop civil works to complete before we can implement. Uh, a number of locations, we're fortunate that we already have ready for us where, uh, developers were conditioned to provide a little indented bus bay or turnout, as we call them. So while we do have a number of locations ready, we have approximately fourteen locations in the city that will need a little bit of extra sidewalk to accommodate our stops. So, uh, you know, the latest assessment of that will, you know, require us, uh, to implement in May. Uh, city staff, we're very grateful for their assistance in providing the technical input. Uh, we are basically, uh, only here at the direction of the city. Uh, we're fully relying on city's technical input for siding of bus stops. Uh, sidewalks, as I mentioned, will need, uh, widening in a number of places with a little bit of additional concrete work. Um, RTA will be able to arrange that work, so we're not relying on, uh, an injection of funds from the city, but we do coordinate with the city in case there are opportunities where other work is already proposed. And then, uh, operating funding, um, Route Four is really one of the first, um, beneficiaries of the SB one funding, uh, now that, uh, that has become a, a stable, uh, source of funding. Both, we can use that for either capital or operating funding. So Route Four, fortunately, uh, we have that funding now, so we have a solid funding source. Again, we wouldn't be reliant on any city funding. So really, that's, uh, an overview of, uh, where through this route with transit in, in the city. Uh, we're very pleased to, you know, support the city with our transit system and I think happy to take any questions that, uh, any of you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I know that you had mentioned the three hundred riders or trips. Uh, what is a successful, what is, in the opinion of the agency or by standard, a successful bus route?
Yep, we, sure, we look at it actually from a couple of perspectives. Ridership for a route of this nature, the three hundred, uh, is a good starting point. We'll adjust that, you know, according to what ridership we actually achieve. It's always, you know, comes down to the, uh, riders boarding the bus and, uh, seeing if our estimates are accurate. We also look at a productivity measure, so how many hours we invest and how many riders we obtain from that. And we expect this route to be in the normal range of, uh, between ten and fifteen boardings per hour. So we're confident that this route, uh, will achieve, you know, a acceptable rate of, uh, return according to our, uh, statistics that we apply across our full network.
And a follow-up question, um, getting from the west side of town over to, and I believe this is going over to Corona to the train, you were saying?
Correct.
What's that timeframe from one end of the line to the other?
End-to-end runtime, forty minutes is what we're projecting. And, uh, of course, the further down the line you board, the quicker that trip will be.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Yao?
Thank you for this presentation and I'm, I'm really excited to hear about this. It, it's something that we have been championing for, I know Brendan especially, um, because we don't have any public transit on our west side of the city, especially, you know, considering Archibald. Um, it's, it's one of, um, we have a lot of residential units there, housing there, and there's no public transit that goes through there, so I'm really excited to hear about this. With that being said, um, I think I might have blanked out my question. Um, it's been a long week. Oh, come back to me in a bit.
All right.
I'll, I'll let Brendan, I'll, I'll let Mayor Protan Plot go first.
Mayor Protan Plot?
Can, can you go back to that map real quick, by chance?
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you again for the presentation. It's very, very helpful, very insightful for us. And I thought it maybe, we, I know we were considering one point maybe looking to have that stop towards Norco College, but it looks like that's not the case. Um, do we know that, eh, eh, do, do we project the type of riders going on there maybe? And the reason I'm asking this question is, is, you know, it'd be nice to target more of our, our, our student base, right? And it's, it's very cheap ridership for students to go to Norco College and really servicing that area. Do we know that, are, are we kind of doing any type of stats as far as looking at maybe at that as well?
Right now, Route Three is our core linkage to Norco College. And unfortunately, the connection in from the west side is not available. The road network, you know, specifically is not designed to provide that. And, uh, really, this alignment for its success relies on its fast alignment, uh, direct into Corona. We do have connectivity, obviously, with the three at both ends, so they will be able to ride out of this corridor and connect into the three to reach the college. And the walk-in from, uh, River Road, uh, while I wouldn't describe it as a short walk, it, it is an actual available pedestrian link, uh, as opposed to a, a car link, or, or for that matter, getting our vehicles through.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I think Councilmember Yao remembered her question.
Yes, as, as I do now. Um, in fact, now I have an additional question now that, um, Mayor Protan Plot brought up, Norco College. Yes, um, speaking of students, I, I know Route Three goes through the high school, but for students who want to take buses from the west side of the city to the high school, they would either have to get off and then walk the distance or transfer somehow, which I don't think will be the smart option. But would it be possible to maybe have a little detour to the high school?
We, we can certainly explore that, um, particularly once we see how the route initially performs. And, uh, certainly if we're going to look for additional markets, that would be definitely one of the, the most available ones.
And, and I know one of the concerns is that traffic flows in, in school areas. It would be great if, you know, our high school students can take buses instead of having to drive or having parents, um, dropping them off. So the second thing, which was my original question that I forgot about initially, is, um, the transit center. So I know a lot of the trains from MetroLink, they depart early, like, starting at four AM or four, four, around four-thirty. Um, and I saw that the hour starts at six.
Yep, it is true. We are tending to connect with the later trains rather than those super early ones. Part of the reason is Route Three has not proved successful and I'm a little bit hesitant, you know, to invest heavily in the early morning. We'll, we'll definitely evaluate as we get customer comment in, but you, you are correct. The train focuses more on the, uh, the last few trains out of the area. Uh, and it really is just reflective of our experience with Route Three. I wish it were different. I, you know, would love to, uh, be able to take the proactive step, but
Yeah.
at this point, we'll, uh, yeah, we'll evaluate, uh, similar to the school request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think we're good. Thank you so much for this presentation and this update. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Item five point three is our student liaison report from our new student liaison, Michael Roman. Mr. Roman, will you please provide your update?
Yes. Good evening, council members, distinguished guests and fellow citizens of Eastvale. Our Eastvale schools are currently doing some really great things. Clara Barton Elementary kicked off their brand-new school year with their recent back-to-school night, which had one of their largest turnouts ever. Their annual Kinder Parent Info Night was held on September nineteenth and their annual Harvest Festival, which is open to the community, is on October twenty-fifth. Harada Elementary's school year has been off to a great start, too. Uh, with their dual immersion, students hosting their fifth annual Fiesta Patrias event at Roosevelt High School on September fourteenth, which over two thousand people attended. Uh, tomorrow, all of Harada will be wearing the color of gold for childhood cancer awareness, as well as all of the year-round teachers in the city of Eastvale will be participating in a training on Friday, September twenty-seventh, uh, to support critical thinking and problem-solving amongst their students. Uh, Harada and, Harada Rosa Parks and East, sorry. Harada Rosa Parks and Reagan Elementary Schools have also partnered together to provide Parents on Point, which is a night of learning for our parents. It is a conference-style event, which parents get to choose two of many different breakout sessions to attend. These breakout sessions include topics such as restorative practices in the home, social media and supporting the mental health of Emma Elementary students. Rosa Parks had their night on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, Harada on Thursday, September nineteenth, and Reagan will host theirs on Wednesday, November sixth. Both Eastvale and Harada Student Councils are starting a Coins for College Drive, which aims to turn money earned from recycling bottles and cans into, uh, scholarships for ERHS seniors, uh, who attended each of these schools. Uh, Eastvale Elementary's A-Track Award Ceremony will, will be on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Their PTA just held their All-Star Car- Carnival, which aimed to get more families involved with their teachers and which over seven hundred people attended this event. Uh, Eastvale Elementary also had a fun night fundraising at their local Eastvale, uh, uh, at our local Eastvale, Baskin Robbins. Uh, and Eastvale Elementary also achieved silver level recently in their PBIS program, in which they do a lot to promote positive behavior in their schools. Uh, River Heights Intermedia recently just hosted their That Seventies Dance with over four hundred students attending. River Heights is thrilled to announce that the National Junior Honor Society Induction Ceremony is on October sixteenth at six PM and they would like to invite any interested Eastvale elected officials to attend this very, very special event. Our Eastvale schools are currently up to some truly awesome things to create young model citizens within our community. And thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Didn't, uh, one of your golf teams do something?
Yes, uh, our golf teams are, our girls' golf team, I believe, is very, uh, high up as of right now. I'm not exactly quite too sure on what the exact title was, uh, but I do know that they have scored very well in their, uh, in their division so far.
Yeah, I thought they won the cha- the girls won the championship.
Championships, okay. Uh, I'm sorry, I just found that out right now, um. But yes, I do know, I, I'm part of the ASP program there and I do know that our girls' golf team is very, very, uh, advanced for, for all the golf teams in CNUSD, so, yeah.
How did Club Rush go?
Club Rush went very well. Um, today we are going over in our business meetings, so every Wednesday, our ASPs ho- hold business meetings. Uh, and we went over through the fundraisers of how many clubs were, uh, how much money each club made and we were talking, uh, clubs making upwards of five hundred dollars in just sales of food, as well as different items. So these clubs are really doing great things on our campus. Uh, we're really impressed with how professional they handle their business in after-school meetings, just from students alone.
Very good, thank you.
And thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good, great stuff. And by the way, don't let Councilmember Tesari give you a hard time. He knows everything that happens at high school, so it's not, it was an unfair question, Joe.
It was, it was a, it was a definitely a retirement-like-minded question.
Oh, no, no, I, I, I didn't say that. He, he said that. But, um, appreciate the, the presentation, looking forward to future ones, um.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Just to echo, uh, Councilmember Lorimer, welcome. We're glad to have you, glad to have you here and sharing these updates with us. Quick question on the Parents on Point. Um, you said that there were three different ones. A couple of them have passed, right?
Uh, yes, so the Rosa Parks holded their, held their Parent, uh, on Point night on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. Harada's is on Thursday, September nine, uh, was on September nineteenth. And Reagan is actually the only one that's remaining on Wednesday, November sixth. And there's, uh, the ones that the principal sent me was, uh, Restorative Practices in the Home, Mindfulness, uh, The Art of Letting Go, Social Media and Supporting the Mental Health of Elementary Students. And these parents get to choose two of these breakout sessions to attend.
Perfect, thank you very much. Thank you for all the information that you shared and all the update. If we can, we have a tradition with our student liaison, if we can get a picture, um, just as, as you're here with us this evening. So we'll do that right now.
Oh, all right.
All right, we will move on to item number six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the city council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff or members of the audience. Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have three comment cards. The first one is for Ike Bootsma.
Mr. Bootsma.
Good evening, council, staff, public. Uh, I have a request. I just wonder. Okay, I was just wondering if
Uh, the council or the city staff can work with the chamber and get some of the businesses in Eastvale to use the Eastvale name instead of using Maraloma. We've had business here that were here when we became a city and nine years later, they still welcome the people into the store, uh, welcome to Maraloma. And I just, it kind of a slap in the face that they're not proud enough to use the Eastvale name. So I just wonder if they, we could work with the ca- uh, maybe the chamber to get these businesses changed. And even the ribbon cuttings, I've seen, uh, you know, on their address, they'll say Maraloma. So it's really kind of, I think it's a simple thing to do, but I take proud, pride in, uh, living in Eastvale and when they put Maraloma, it's kind of like a slap in the face. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that comment and, uh, I completely agree with you. I've sent numerous emails, uh, would I see different things, I'll send them out back to whoever it's come from, reminding them of that exact thing. I know that one of the local businesses, um, just recently, used to say, "Welcome to such-and-such store in Maraloma." And that was brought up in front of, uh, the city manager, talked to them and said, "You know you're in Eastvale? You need to say, 'Welcome to Eastvale,'" what that store was. So we are working on it. We will continue to work on that. We'll continue to make sure that, um, that'll happen. I think part of that also happens when, uh, we get our own zip code. So that's another thing that we're working on, that I think they'll all come together and it'll help people realize and help us to have our, our true identity of Eastvale.
Mayor Rigby and, uh, former Mayor Bootsma just wanted to let you know that, um, we have been working with the chamber and we are working on a letter. If we haven't already sent it out, i- it, it will be sent out. Uh, it, it was sent out to all businesses in Eastvale, reminding them that they are in the city of Eastvale. And so, and so we are on top of it. Uh, um, it's just, some of them, that tape recorder has been in place for ten years and hasn't changed, so we, we need to get them into CDs or something, or, or USPs or whatever the new technology is.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Mr. Donahue?
Next speaker is Kelly Robertson.
Uh, good evening, mayor and city leadership. I'm Kelly Robertson and I'm very honored to be here, representing Census twenty-twenty. I'm one of only four recruiters. We got a big, big area to cover, but we're doing our best and I appreciate you allowing me to be here in the city of Maral- oh, no, I'm sorry, Eastvale. Sorry, had to do it. Okay, I'm watching the clock. Here we go.
Is that microphone off now or no?
Okay, give me a couple seconds more, okay? I'm gonna read fast. As you know, the census is almost here, it really is, and has real-world impact on the effects, uh, impact that affects our nation, California, and the city of Eastvale, uh, directly. Data collective in the census provides federal state, or federal funds of seven, six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars, plus some state funding, um, by using population counts and the characteristics of the city of Eastvale, um, and that targets unique, unique needs of your city. For example, funds may be provided for roads or highway improvements or the development of rural areas. Money may be directed to school programs like special education and school lunches, or help with college students in the form of Pell Grants. Um, money can provide services for people living in poverty, services for limited English speakers or for designating, um, facilities for children, in particular adults and the elderly who might have disabilities. Funds may be used for planning hospitals and nursing homes and clinics, and healthcare services for children, adults and seniors. There's also funds allocated for planning for faith ba- uh, faith-based organizations, crime victim assistance, disaster relief and wildlife restoration, job training and assistance for our veterans, um, and the list as long as you know. They said it's imperative that the city of Eastvale gets, uh, an accurate count so that every penny deserved of that six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars comes here. And to achieve that goal, I need applicants. I need hundreds and hundreds of residents to fill tons of job openings, federal job openings. Right now, in particular, I have a job called Enumerator. They don't really knock on the doors right now. Maybe next year they're doing, uh, address canvassing. The pay starts at seventeen dollars an hour. The pay starts at seventeen dollars an hour, and if you want to be a supervisor, you can get eighteen fifty an hour. Job, job applications online, three steps, pretty easy. And the interview is by phone, so you could be in your jammies or whatever, and be able to get that job. We do have veterans preference for our veterans, they're called Tier One Hiring, it's at the top of the list. Applications are also accepted on smartphones, I did it myself, so it's pretty easy. And the interview, as you know, is conducted by telephone, but there's, so that means really that there's no need for a resume, or a fancy outfit, or travel, so it's great for everybody, not a lot of bias, which is, I think, kind of unusual in hiring, personally. So, let's see, I got five seconds. So, with your permission, I want to send you an electronic copy of my jobs flyer and anything else that you need, and let's get rocking and rolling here and get Eastvale employed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for that presentation. If you can leave that flyer, or if you can send electronic copy to our P I O, her card should be back there, or, there she is, right there. And then she'll help get that out. So thank you very much.
Is she able to answer any questions?
Oh, quick question for you, Councilmember Tesari.
Yes, thank you for coming out and joining us tonight. There was one other thing the census also helps us deal with, and that's our representative democracy and the number of representatives that are in Washington, D.C. Does that factor into the population count?
Yes, sir, I just ran out of time.
Okay.
I moved around too much.
That's okay. And I know you're, you're a recruiter, but can you tell us anything about the hours when census workers are supposed to be going out?
I'll step up, yes.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
So we just finished an address canvassing operation. They allowed them twenty to twenty-five hours a week to work, close to home, that's what's really cool about the canvassing. It was just address checking, so you're in your own zip code, but we really lacked in the rural areas, because if it's not your neighborhood, some people are kind of, you know, think it's sketch, and they feel real uncomfortable. But then there's lots of people that are like, hey, for eighteen bucks an hour, seventeen dollars an hour, I'll do it. So we were able to finish our address canvassing out here. But it wasn't an epic failure, because that would be bad for me to say, but it wasn't really all that great. So, they're gonna actually not repeat exactly what they did, but they do have more neighborhoods to go into. So, they'll probably be working about twenty-five hours a week, we do like to work with students. And one thing I should tell you is that it starts at age eighteen, so that's really neat for students, but guess what the max age is? That's why I got hired, no max age, yay! So, we, I just trained somebody who was eighty-six, and he does zumba, so we have some really fun people, you know, on board. So, yeah. Oh, you too, okay, cool. So anyways, yeah, we do have so many things, the list is so long, I really actually had no idea, but I like trivia and data, so I will tell you, I am really super proud of the work that we're doing. I mean, I feel, I feel good about what we're doing for our nation, and you know, our last decennial wasn't too hot, it wasn't a great time for our nation in twenty-ten, so we still had people living in, car, their cars in Walmart and all. So, and we had a lot of empty houses, so we're hoping to get a good count, a really good count, and demographics are so different everywhere. So, it really works good when you have neighbors in your own, you know, in your own neighborhood doing the count, they, they feel proud about it, too.
Is, is it unusual for anybody to be going door-to-door after nine P M. at night?
Uh, no, no, especially because it's gonna get dark soon, I don't think, why did you have people come to your door at night, at night?
Yeah, it was one of the complaints.
Get it out, really? I wonder if they were fake people.
I think that's, was that more of what you were getting at with the hours, is, is we've had complaints in the city of people coming around supposedly with the census anywhere eight o'clock on in the evening.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they do say on the application, are you available to work nights and weekends, but they don't want anybody out at night, maybe they're trying to make it cooler, but did you report, can you kind of give me some scoop on that later, and then I'll let our census office know, perhaps? Or I'll, you know, email me, or whatever works for you, but I would like to report that back. We did have some problems in Reno Valley and Menifee for that, but they warranted our people, just so you know, everybody has a tablet that they use, it has a G P S in it, so they know what hours the census workers are working, and there's kind of no way to cheat on it unless they didn't have it on, but then they do want to get paid, so why would they do that? So, it sounds kind of scammy to me.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you.
I'll stand you, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Yow, one more question, sorry.
More time for you. I'm sorry. Did, did I hear it correctly when you said that the address canvassing was not that successful?
Yeah, we didn't, they only want to count one time, and they do use geomapping, but you know, just the satellites don't hit everything. They also do like the human factor, because people come out and go, hey, what are you doing? And then it's an opportunity to educate people about census, and of course, younger people have no clue what that is, or what the funds, where the funds come from, so it's kind of fun. I forgot your question already, I get so excited about, like, what I do, sorry.
So how, how, as a city, how can we help make sure it's successful?
Oh, good. Well, I don't know if you've been contacted by a part, they call them partnership specialists, it's somebody that I work with.
We, yeah, we actually just recognized her.
Was it female? Mm-hmm, yeah. She, yeah, you're gonna probably do a proclamation or something, right? So, we don't, we work together, but they're the education piece for Complete Count Committee. I do participate in a few, only because we were short on partnership specialists for a really long time. We started really late, I don't know why, but, you know, it's way above my pay grade, so, but we're getting, you know, on board, we still have six months, and so, is her name Carla? Do you remember? She's a nice person, yeah, she's really great. And I do have another partnership specialist with me tonight, but it's a secret, don't tell her, he's just here with me, we did something else earlier. So, hopefully you'll get going on that. Do you work closely with your chambers?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
The Maraloma Chamber? Yeah, just kidding, okay, sorry. I can't help myself. Yeah, so that, those are the cities that are really successful, that I've noticed, that have been doing their complete count, and they started a long time ago, they didn't need anybody to get them going. Everything's online about that, it's pretty neat. I have some stuff I can leave you, Carla didn't do it. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm done joking around, you all done with the questions, I'm really gonna go now.
All right, thank you. Mr. Donahue, do we have any more public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have one more comment card from Michael O'Connor, and I will note that he has time donated from Oscar Mora, so he will get six minutes.
All right, Mr. O'Connor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. September twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, is a day I will always remember. At this exact moment, three years ago, I was in a Torrance parking lot. I had just let a police officer know where my family was gathered. Crime scene tape separated us from my nephew, Christopher Franklin Beasley. Christopher had been shot and killed on his front doorstep. Christopher was the oldest of three brothers, and had lived with his family at his home since he was a small child. At eleven P M., I watched Melissa McBride provide the first story on Channel Seven News of two brothers on their front porch, who were approached by a man, asked where they were from, and then shots were fired. This was the first I heard of the attempted murder of Bruce, the middle brother. Shortly after midnight, crime scene tape was removed. I was shocked, as the police had never come to talk to us. When I approached the front porch, the horror of what had happened was still there for all of us to see. I spent the next twenty minutes with a hose, in the dark, of that early morning, doing the best that I could to make the front porch presentable. There are very few murders in Eastvale, but I hope that our police protocol includes a family debrief about the scene, and a protocol with the fire department to provide sanitation assistance as needed. The alleged gunman was arrested thirty-one days later. Shortly thereafter, I met Deputy D.A. Eugene Miata, the prosecutor of the case. Eugene has reviewed legal strategy and evidence with the family, and we're satisfied and confident in the process for bringing justice for Christopher. One concept Eugene explained is due process, which means that an accused person is entitled to a fair trial with a presumption of innocence. Due process can quickly clash with the rush to, rush to justice that we might want as individuals and as a society. The suspect is still sitting in jail. Two weeks ago today, jury selection began, and finally, last Thursday, a jury was sworn in. Quite unexpectedly, I was really overwhelmed by the sight of a swearing-in of a jury. The swearing-in of people, whether juries or councils, is a symbolic gesture that I will always see in a different light now. Civil matters are settled much like criminal matters, but more streamlined. This brings me to my main topic for tonight, the city's abatement process. Chapter eight dot one-eight of the city code is entitled Administrative Nuisance Abatement. The chapter contains thirteen sections laying out in detail the abatement process. A subsection reads in part, quote, "The procedures for abatement set forth in this chapter shall not restrict the city from abating public nuisances in any other manner provided by law." Simply put, this means city officials can ignore the process stated in the rest of the code. The described process includes steps of declaring a public nuisance, and scheduling a public hearing before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is sworn panel, hears the evidence from city officials, members of the public, and the accused property owner. The Planning Commission deliberates, judges, and hands down a verdict, acting as the judge and jury. An appeal of the decision can be made to you, the city council. The city council will then either reaffirm or reject the decision of the planning council. All of these steps are done publicly, with proper notice, and with full transparency to the public and the property owner. Enforcement of a guilty finding at this stage can then begin. Over the last nine years, the city of Eastvale is named in Riverside Superior Court in eight cases. Of these, five were in defense, and three were initiated by the city. Two city-initiated actions are quite recent, one last month and one last week, and both are related to property abatement on Rowan Court. The property has never had a public hearing as outlined in the code. Both attempted legal actions by the city were decided in favor of the property, rather than the city. I suspect that both failures are related to lack of due process, but I'm not a lawyer. As an Eastvale resident, I expected that you collectively, as a city council, are to be informed via closed session of legal matters. I see no records of such meetings. I categorically deny that I'm accusing anyone of wrongdoing. I researched chapter two dot one of the city's code regarding the city attorney's duties. It appears the city attorney is allowed to prepare and file legal actions in the city's names without the consent of the city council. However, I personally am a bit uncomfortable with this ability. In my research, I found a twenty-eighteen public legal opinion issued by the Oakland City Attorney. Under their charter, the city council ratification is required of lawsuits initiated by that city. The attorney's opinion goes further and states that any high-profile abatements that are initiated in the name of the people of the state of California, which is what other abatement processes include, any of those in their city would be brought before closed session to inform council of the action. I will soon be emailing you additional details of these recent council court filings and other supporting documents, including some examples of properties in both Norco and Ontario that were recently abated, so you can see what their processes were. Setbacks can and do happen, even with rock-solid cases, so I don't view the failure to data of the city's quest to obtain these court actions as a reflection on the city attorney or the city manager. My family unfortunately has witnessed another major setback on Monday, when the jury in the murder case of Christopher Franklin Beasley was dismissed and a mistrial declared. We're devastated once again, but again, Deputy D.A. Miata still has all the evidence we need, and will fully believe that justice will be served. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Donahue, do we have any additional public comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, we will be moving on to item number seven, the Consent Calendar. In all matters, the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mr. Donahue, do we have any members of the staff that have requested to pull any items?
Uh, we have two comment cards for item seven point ten.
I'm assuming that would be member of the public pulling an item, then?
Correct.
Do we have council requesting to pull any items? With no further items being pulled, I would, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Donahue.
Councilmember Yow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Plott?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, we'll move on to item number seven point ten, approval of policy for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, business incentive loan program. Ms. Wright, can you please introduce this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city of Eastvale Business Incentive Policy was created very much similar to the Community Development Block Grant Business Incentive Policy adopted by council in July two thousand and nineteen. There are many economic development tools, selecting the appropriate tools depends on the issues and needs of the agency, and what the agency is seeking to address. The business incentive policy addresses the high cost of entry and other issues that new businesses may face in Eastvale. Please let me know if I can answer any questions. Thank you.
And just for the public's information, we did have a corrected city of business, city of Eastvale Business Incentive Loan Policy, which is, I believe, the master copy is located in the back for the public information, if they would like. Mr. Donahue, can we please have the public comments on this item?
First speaker is Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor.
I didn't get very much time to actually prepare a comment on this particular item, because it was something I saw a little bit late in the process. My request to have it pulled from the consent calendar is that consent calendar is usually for things that are non-controversial. This is setting up, I believe, a new program allocating a significant amount of money to be done, you know, in a process that should probably have more discussion and a formal presentation. What I had heard from a neighbor is that their concerns are the check and balances on the process, the amount of money being put out in the process, and then just even a question about, is this the best way to spend the money? Which, I understand why it's there, it's because we want to attract more fine dining into the city, but I think it's worth a little bit more discussion prior to just approving this item, especially as a consent item. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, just for the public's information, consent items, just like this and any other item, can be pulled for discussion. So a consent item isn't something that just automatically gets pushed through. Any, any item on the consent calendar can be pulled, such as you have any item on a council business can go through without any discussion, if there's no questions or anything. So just because it's on a consent calendar doesn't mean that, that there's no ability to discuss an item. Mr. Donahue, can we have our next public comment, please?
Next speaker is Sean Perella.
Mr. Perella.
Good evening, my name is Sean Perella, resident of the city of Eastvale for ten years. I'm here to speak about item seven point ten, and I'm going to echo Mr. O'Connor's comments about being on the consent calendar. I understand that anyone could pull an item on a consent calendar, but as you said, Mr. Mayor, items on the consent calendar are generally considered routine, and don't, are like the approval of minutes and such. And I believe something this magnitude isn't routine, and should be discussed in a public forum. Some of my concerns, and I have been, I'm in receipt of many emails of people that are concerned, and I do see the correction in the back regarding the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, now it is twenty-five thousand dollars for council approval. Some of my concerns are this, is this needs to be spoken up in a public manner, because is it really the best use of five hundred thousand dollars? And that's not a small amount, five hundred thousand dollars of general fund money. When the city is talking for the last year about potentially having a sales tax raise on the ballot, and we're saying that we're projecting to have a deficit in several years, and the discussion was that was because of the police department, and we saw how a lucrative production, productive speaking and opportunity on the police department led to where we're going with the police department now. I believe that it would be in the best interest of our city, our residents behind me who do pay the taxes, to have a conversation on where we want our sales tax, especially general fund sales tax to go, especially if this board is going to be looking at potentially putting a sales tax measure on the ballot. Five hundred thousand dollars is not a small amount. Five hundred thousand dollars that is going to be potentially given away, and I think we need to look at it as, not only as a loan, but a loan that could be forgiven in five years. And this board, and this entire staff, could be changed in five years. And I want you guys to think about the, the potential financial impact that that's going to leave your predecessors in five years from now. There needs to be a system in place to look at the potential businesses coming in, to vet those businesses, and to work with those businesses after they sign a letter of intent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any more public comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, council. Mr. Tesari.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually do have a question, uh, regarding the makeup of the panel that would be reviewing the applications and, uh, which, uh, who would be the members? And I didn't see in there that there was, uh, any council members on the, uh, committee.
The policy has a loan committee in it that's comprised of staff. It's the city manager, finance director, uh, economic development manager, and community development director, I believe. I'm not missing anyone? No, that's it. Um, so no, there's, there's no council members involved in reviewing the loan application and that sort of administrative process. But the loans, if they're twenty-five thousand dollars or more, come to the full city council for approval. So your involvement's at that point in time. If the loan is for a restaurant, because you have a restaurant ad hoc committee, the loan committee can certainly choose to consult with the restaurant ad hoc if it fills the inputs needed on the caliber of the restaurant or something. But we wouldn't have like a, a subcommittee of the council specifically for, uh, participating in the loan review process.
Yeah, I think that's where my confusion was, uh, because that's what I was thinking of was the ad hoc and having the two council members. So that would only be applicable for a eatery, a restaurant.
Correct. So that's a restaurant ad hoc. So if this, you get an application for a restaurant, then they would be involved. And obviously, if it's for a different type of business, then, then it, there would be no council involvement or request for feedback unless you establish a different ad hoc committee to, um, you know, provide those kinds of feedback for different kinds of businesses.
Yeah, I, I would just, my personal opinion, I would, I would, I would prefer to have two council members participate in the, uh, review.
Well, if we establish, um, a council member subcommittee with established jurisdiction, then it's a standing committee and your meetings have to be noticed and agendized under the Brown Act. So it's sort of the trade-off that comes with that. So we can certainly do that. However, then, as you are going through the loan review process with the subcommittee, it would have to be in an agendized public meeting.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question off of that. Is this, is this a long-term thing? Because if it's a short-term thing, we can do an ad hoc committee for it, correct?
The policy doesn't have a term on it, but your budget only is for the fiscal year. So it's always going to be subject to whatever money you put in the budget for this purpose. Uh, so you'll have to make those decisions each year as you're going through your budget process. But the policy itself doesn't automatically rescind or repeal that we include a provision like that.
Could we set an ad hoc committee for this, for this budget amount? And then if we do it again next year, then we set another ad hoc committee for a budget amount? Because we may, we may go years that we don't have a budget amount, that we don't need to have it. Or is that something that maybe you can look into and...
I, I can look into that practice. The, it obviously becomes an issue of year, if it's year-over-year repeating itself, then the question arises as to whether it's truly ad hoc. But at the beginning, typically, an ad hoc would be appropriate. It's just a question of whether at some point it converts to a standing committee.
And maybe if we utilize the current ad hoc committee and we maybe, I don't, I don't know the technical way to do it, but if we were to drop that committee and change it to a business incentive ad hoc committee, to go back to Councilmember Tesari's idea of making sure that two council members are involved in that. Um, because I don't think there's a need to have both of the committees an ad hoc and an addition, or a restaurant ad hoc and an additional, um, business incentive ad hoc committee.
It's, the council could certainly, um, agendize action to rebrand or rename its existing ad hoc or dissolve it and form a new one. Um, either way is the same.
We'll see what we, what we decide. Anything else right now, Councilmember Tesari?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Yow?
This might be a little bit too, um, going too greedy needy. But I'm looking at one of, one of the things that I, I want to make sure as we are attracting more businesses to Eastville is that they are hiring locals, like hiring residents of Eastville, um, especially good businesses. And with that being said, I know in there the purpose it does says that, you know, we want to make sure that, um, businesses who are applying for this economic develop, development assistance are creating jobs within the community. But then when I was looking at the application, there's no way of ensuring that they are actually hiring residents of Eastville's. Like, I'm looking at the last page.
So the application is just to request the loan, it's not to
Got it.
create the conditions of the loan, and the conditions of the loan can be done in a, in a separate document?
Okay. And what do, do we, do we give priorities to Eastville residents, business owners?
We don't have a council-adopted policy on, on providing, uh, or giving incentives for Eastville resident business owners, um, but that is some direction that we can review with you and the council, the city attorney, uh, to see if we can do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Um, given the, uh, the, the brief, uh, presentation that was given so far, could, uh, and I know that this is, we've been working towards this for a while. Can we please, uh, get a review of the purpose of this policy? What we're trying to do here in attracting specific kinds of businesses, if we could get?
The goal, excuse me, the goal to, of this incentive policy is to bridge a gap that is currently creating issue for new businesses, especially who are trying to reside here in Eastville. The cost to enter Eastville as a new business is very high. And in talking to many of our businesses who would like to come here, they are telling us that our, our retail rates, our business rates are much higher than our surrounding cities. So we are here to, uh, you know, hopefully to bridge that gap.
A lot of, just to piggyback off of that, a lot of times new construction, uh, is a lot more expensive than when retail, uh, commercial space has gone through its second or third life cycle. And a lot of times new entrepreneurial businesses start in second or third life cycle bit, uh, retail rather than brand-new retail. And, and developers that are doing brand-new retail are looking for, uh, uh, very, uh, credit-worthy uh, national brands that come, uh, um, and, and so oftentimes it doesn't, uh, allow for a mom-and-pop business to compete with a national brand. And so, uh, a, a local business i- in, in the region, whether it's in Eastville or around, around our surrounding area, has a harder time competing sometimes, um, like, like say, if you got a local coffee shop versus a, a national brand, uh, coffee shop, the national brand can out, um, bid for the space and, and maybe that's why we only have one coffee provider in our city.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Lorimer?
Nope.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Plot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a few kind of comments, maybe things to kind of help put some context to all this. Um, and just kind of going off of some of the, the public comments. When we decided to do this, just want to make it clear for the, for the record of the public or for the public, is that we had three public, or three hearings, budget hearings, we are putting together. And two of those three budget hearings, one of them just being public safety-related, so it's really nothing to do with this, was about economic development. We had brought this up for discussion. We had, we actually talked about this two different times, about this incentive program. This was public record, it was brought to the public. To my knowledge, no one made comment on it, but it was something that we were not only, we were pretty aggressive about. We, we wanted to attract businesses in Eastville. And we knew part of it was to create incentive program, which was approved by this council back, I believe, in May. Fast forward now, now we're looking at the policy of how we create, because we don't really have the opportunity. I mean, we have businesses that are right on the cusp and they're going to be coming in, but now we need to build the policy. We didn't know what that would look like at this point, right? So we're building the policy. And as when opportunities come up, then we can structure whatever that loan or whatever it maybe looked, that, that it looks like. But here's the reason overall, and Kimberly and Brian both addressed it. The biggest vulnerability in Eastville, and if you want to ask why, because some say, why would it be, why do you need to do this? Is there a better way to use this funds? The answer is no, right? If you say you need to sometimes spend money to make money, our biggest vulnerability is sales tax generation. Property tax doesn't pay the bills, does, does not help, really help your general fund. The sales tax has a much more significant impact on your general fund and especially the TOT side, which is hotels. When we looked at the Hamner Place project in particular, and we're not just subjecting this only to the Hamner Place. It could be anywhere. But when you looked at that opportunity, that was going to be basically a restaurant, a shopping center, basic shopping center. That's what it was going to look like. And we battled hard to change it to something more transformative, something to create some type of regional destination. Because we're not just talking about the revenue that we're losing in Eastville, which is seventy-one million dollars, right? So that's about six million dollars of sales tax that we're losing. But what we're not e- even focused on, but now we're focused on more is how can we really bring in that? How can we take sales revenues from other cities into our city, and in particular, the hotel? So when you talk about these restaurants, think bigger than just what they incentivize the restaurant for. Think of the piece of the puzzle, right? You can't just have, uh, a, a, a restaurant's not going to succeed just on a shopping center or a restaurant. If you want to make some type of nightlife, you got to put a couple of restaurants that are, that have a good buzz. I think the restaurants that, that we have, the city's actually gotten really involved in in selecting certain restaurants and being helping developers through that process, our restaurants, and this is subjective, but have a great culture behind them and have a good following. So you're building a piece of the puzzle with the hotel, with other aspects, with the architecture, what it's going to look like. So when we talk about the incentive program, it's a puzzle piece for what we're trying to create, which we don't have. And that's somewhat of a downtown or somewhat of a, of, not really a downtown, but somewhat of a, of a place where people can go on a Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday brunch. That is something we've never experienced in our city, and it's great for our residents. I know the vast majority, anecdotally knocking on doors when I was campaigning, this was the number one issue. We've also measured it, right? It is the number one concern in Eastville. And it's the, and if you look at it from just a financial standpoint, it's the smartest move you can make as a city to build this, right? So this is the vision and direction of Eastville, and I'd be more than willing to talk to anybody that would think otherwise. But you, yeah, when we talk about the potential sales tax increase, look, this is a way to avoid that, right? Because if we can create it, it's a possibility you can avoid the sales tax by creating more generation of sales tax revenue that's coming in. So this is the reason why we're doing it, and it's a smart move. We feel it's very calculated, it's very to the point, and I feel like we would recover our dollars fairly pretty quickly. And again, it's not just for the one restaurant. Look at it as a, it's a piece of the entire puzzle of what we're trying to create. That's the bigger picture in all this, so it's kind of my comments on that.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Yow?
I, I, I agree. I, I do think that we have a need for that. But with that, with that being said, um, my question is that should we hash out the details before approving this? Or are we going to approve this and then have like a, like maybe two council members? I don't know if we want to call it ad hoc committee, but to hash out the details, like what is the process for this?
We've outlined some of the process i- in, in the attached documents. Uh, um, could you add more onerous responsibilities to it? Yes. Uh, um, could, could we do that anyways? Yes. Uh, um, so if through the loan review application committee, i- if we have a concern for something, we could ha, we could ask for additional studies or evaluations or different partnerships to come in and help evaluate, uh, what, how, uh, the risk or liability uh, to loaning somebody or the collateral that we would need for it. I think one of the, the challenges is, is if you create such an onerous process uh, um, in, in, in the city of Eastville where the business incentive program isn't used, uh, um, then why did we set money aside and why do we create a process? Uh, and so, but let's create a process, and then if we need to add more things to the process and, and we're going to continually evaluate it, we'll bring that back before council or, or we'll just ask the applicant, can you, can you also eh, do these additional studies or evaluations? But if you make all businesses go through those studies, the, the process to get a loan might be so onerous that people don't even apply. And, and so we want to, we want to balance that, um, um, onerousness of, of getting a loan.
Go ahead.
It, it's kind of to Jocelyn's comment, and just want to make sure it's clear. The, the way I understand it as well is, in, in the situation where we are in a negotiation of, of whatever that loan looks like, the amount, the structure, whatever that case may be, and we figure out at that point in time, that would go back to city council for the approval of that loan. So I mean, we would actually break out, when we have the details of specifically, that all goes back to the public and obviously council for approval or not. So I'm just making sure that's, that's correct.
That's one of the, the corrections in this memo was that anything twenty-five thousand dollars or more is to come back to the council.
Correct.
That, that's always been the way.
That, that was just a typo, that was an extra zero, because the staff report says twenty-five thousand.
And just to clarify, state law requires you to hold a public hearing and make a report on the, the incentive available if, if the loan is going to be a hundred thousand dollars or more. That has to stay on the city's website during, for the duration of the loan. And it requires you to hold a second public hearing at some point during the loan, but no later than five years, um, with an update to the report on the financials, which is another notice public hearing. So there'll be multiple opportunities for, for public input in the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Tesari?
Um, just thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think just to put it simply, it's all these businesses, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So making a rigid set of guidelines kind of limits your flexibility. So it's just, if they need the loan, they apply for it, it goes to committee. And based on whatever that's, that particular business's needs and, uh, capabilities, you know, how capitalized is it? It is just a different things, that'll be determined what kind of restrictions we put on it and whether we accept it or not.
Very good point. Thank you. Councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you. Um, so do we anticipate, what, what sort of dollar amounts are we anticipating for these loans? I, I realize that's asking crystal ball-type questions, but, um, are we talking about loans that people are going to be looking for, a hundred thousand dollar loan? Or are they going to be looking for loans less than twenty-five thousand? The reason I ask is this determines how much, whether or not this will come back before the council. And so are, are we anticipating loans below the twenty-five thousand dollar mark? Or are the majority of them going to be above that?
I would anticipate, just knowing, uh, the business structure of opening a brand-new business in, in Eastville and the costs of getting a sewer and water connection, a grease trap, a hood, a, a, a walk-in refrigerator for, for some of these restaurants and whatnot, that there's some pretty hefty, uh, capital purchases, as well as there's some training of staff and, and getting their business up and running. Uh, um, so I, I'm anticipating that loan requests are probably going to be higher than twenty-five thousand. Uh, um, however, council could set a policy that it doesn't exceed a certain amount, uh, um, and so that people know that we're looking at two or three loans for the five hundred thousand dollar amount, uh, um, or the first loan, uh, uh, you know, we could create different criteria. So, uh, and then this money can also be, be used in conjunction with the CDBG funds that you also created, uh, um, and allocated for, for restaurant incentives in July. Um, so, and, and just to clarify, the, the council and, and the public process has already created a twenty, uh, nineteen, twenty twenty budget that allocated the five hundred thousand dollars for this, uh, business incentive program. Uh, um, and that went through a public process, they didn't get any, um, public comment, and we marketed it throughout the community. Uh, um, so, um, we, we want to make sure that we're creating a process, uh, that is in alignment and is, and is attractive to businesses to come and choose Eastville, um, so that our residents don't have to go to other cities to spend their money. Every time a resident spends money outside of the city, uh, of Eastville, it hurts our ability to serve our residents and our businesses in Eastville.
Thank you.
Councilmember, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and just to go to that point, it's, there are businesses who have decided not to, uh, establish their place of business here in the city of Eastville specifically from something as simple as, as you mentioned, the water and sewer hookups. It's that expensive to, to do that, and it is under twenty-five thousand. So yes, I would anticipate that that's something that could very likely happen.
A, a water sewer hookup is a lot more than twenty-five thousand.
And JCSD, yeah. Well, it all depends on what you have, though. It depends on the type of business. There are some that are less than twenty-five thousand, and those are the types of businesses I'm talking about that have decided not to locate here.
Just a couple of quick comments, uh, just to echo kind of so, of what Councilmember Plot, or Mayor Proton Plot was saying about the process of how this came about. Um, I'd even go back a little bit further than our budget discussions. We had a strategic plan, uh, workshop back in August, or was it November? August of last year where we talked about our strategic plan, um, where it was open to the public, public was invited to be there. And we talked about some of the things that we needed to work on. And one of them was elevating our dining experience. That was one of our top priorities, and how do we make that happen? Uh, through different incentive programs through that. Then we continued to have our budget discussions, once again, that were open to the public. So I like exactly what Mr. Perella was saying, um, to have this open to the public. We've, we've done it multiple times to make sure that the public is well aware of where exactly our budget is. So this is not a new budget item. This is... Where exactly our budget is, so this is not a new budget item. This is just setting a process of us making sure that our budget. That we already set is being done through a process, through a policy. Um, so that, that's already, the amount's already been vetted. Been, um, eh, the public's been more than welcome to to come participate in those. Um, as a reminder too, this is similar, the, this isn't a new thing that we've done in this city. This is something similar that we've done in other projects. Um, things that other cities do s- very similar things like this to attract businesses. We had a situation with Costco. Costco was in negotiation with us and they were in negotiation with our neighboring city. Um, and we ended up eh giving them incentives to make sure that they came here. If they don't come here, they would've gone across the street, we would've had to deal with their traffic, with any crime that happens there. And we would've had to fork that bill out of no generated sales tax from them. Um, so this is something that that uh is not new. This is something that has been done previous. Uh, by previous members of our staff that have that have done this. Um. One of the things going to this specific policy, I would like to see, I know in the staff report it says and or the ad hoc committee. I would like to see if we could change that so that it's and the ad hoc committee versus and or. So that the ad hoc committee, which consists of at least two councilmen, or not at least, it can't be more than two councilmembers. But that consists of the two councilmembers that are consulted on that. Um, I would also like to see with with hopefully my colleagues' support, that we can agendize some sort of. Um, item to bring back that I don't know the right thing to do if we dissolve the restaurant ad hoc committee. And we create a new business ad hoc committee, um, until the time being, and if we need to make it a standing committee, then we do that. But I think it would be important for us to utilize that committee. To make decisions not only based on restaurants or dining, but to make decisions based on businesses that are receiving any kind of incentive. Um, so I would like to to see that happen. Yeah, just a correction, when I was talking about, this has been done, it wasn't given to Costco, it was given to the developer. Um, which the developer couldn't sign Costco until they knew that there was that money being provided, so. But it, like I said, it's it's similar things that have been done. It's not something new to the city, it's not something new to cities around us. Other cities do it all the time. Um, it's it's a great way um to attract businesses. One of the things that we have to look at too as a city here in Eastville. Is is we, we look at certain things sometimes, and I know I've mentioned this before, we look at certain things as expenses. Sometimes we look at this as. Possibly a five hundred thousand dollar expense. I look at expenses as an expense as something that you you spend and you don't really get anything back, or you get very minimal back. This is more of an investment. We have to be smart and we have to invest in our city. If we don't invest in our city, someone else is gonna invest in those businesses. If we don't utilize this money properly and we don't invest in these restaurants, these businesses, whatever the businesses that come to utilize this money. Then these businesses are gonna go elsewhere. These businesses are businesses that are looking to open. They aren't just talking, they're looking to open. If they don't open in Eastville, they're gonna open somewhere else. Many of these businesses that um will come and utilize this money are going to be very successful businesses. That are gonna bring that revenue that has been mentioned to the city, as well as bring that experience to the city, not only for the city. But also for the the region itself, um, just by making Eastville a destination place. That's what we all want. We all want Eastville to be a great place for us as residents to enjoy, as well as our visitors to enjoy. And I think by making sure we make wise investments, once again, not expenses, wise investments, that we'll see that happen. So does any, one on council have any additional comments? Questions? Then I would solicit a motion on this item.
Was there any revisions or additions that we were gonna add to this, to this motion, or were we, I don't know.
There needs to be a motion made, and then depending on whoever makes the motion on what. I I would recommend if a motion is made on this, that we would change that to and versus and or. Um, just when when consulting on the business in- incentive loans. And then also that we bring back to make it a um business incentive ad hoc committee. Instead of just a restaurant committee.
It it could be, since restaurants are such, I, what my suggestion would be, since restaurants are such a focus. That we could say restaurant slash business incentive uh ad hoc committee. Um, so that restaurant is still out there in the, in the focal point of what the committee is doing. But it should be a restaurant that is not, or a business that is not a restaurant, that the ad hoc committee could also work on that. Uh, um, so we can do that uh, um, at the next council meeting, we can bring that back.
I like that idea.
City Clerk Mark Donahue, could you add that to the action items for, thank you.
Pending approval today.
I was seeing heads nod, so I just was.
Do we have a motion? That move approval. With the conditions that we uh stated. Second. Mr. Donahue.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby? Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we're moving on to item nine point one. Which is our strategic plan update. Um. There she is getting ready, Ms. Adams.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, council members and members of the public. I'm Crystal Adams, Senior Management Analyst here in the city of Eastville. Back in August, council, members of the public and staff discussed a strategic plan and set some priority goals for our city. In September, council heard these priority one A and one B goals, and on November fourteenth, the strategic plan was adopted along with the focused priority goals. Our first quarterly update to council was on February twenty seventh, and our second update was on May twenty second. Today's presentation is to highlight some of the strategic plan accomplishments that we've received since the last quarterly update in May. The plan was broken into six main targets, communication and community engagement, public safety, economic development, organizational development. Finance and budget and infrastructure. Here we go. Since our last update into council in May, we have accomplished the following goals. Level one A target two goal four, enhancing traffic safety enforcement. On Saturday, August thirty first, RSO conducted a DUI checkpoint and screened over two thousand five hundred fifty vehicles. And ultimately had one DUI arrest, conducted twenty five sobri- sobriety field tests. And cited or arrested eighteen people for operating a vehicle without a license or driving with a suspended or revoked license. On Wednesday, October second, we will partner with um the Corona Norco School District for the annual International Walk to School Day to promote pedestrian safety. Level one A target four goal one is to strengthen organizational development and effectiveness. In June, we held our annual leadership capacity building retreat, and this summer we awarded Stephanie Vasquez Deputy City Clerk with Employee of the Quarter. Also last month, the Talent, Attraction and Development Division put on the first ever employee benefits fair in City Hall in advance of open enrollment season. Level one A target four goal two, these are my full, um, enhance customer service experience. We launched our new city website on May twenty ninth. And we had our first US passport day on Saturday, August twenty fourth here at City Hall, where the city clerk's office processed a hundred and sixteen passport applications. This will be a new quarterly feature that we will offer here at City Hall. The next passport day will be on Saturday, November nineteenth.
And just so everybody knows, you can also get passports Monday through Thursday by making an appointment.
Yes.
Just for clarification on that, I was possibly planning on showing up, I just looked, is that date correct? I believe November sixteenth is that Saturday. Sixteen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, so, next slide. Level one A target five goals one and seven. Is to enhance transparency to enhance, enhance trans- transparency to enhance public trust. On June eighteenth, we held our financial priorities community workshop, and on July thirtieth, we had our public safety community workshop. Tonight, you will also hear an update on the outcome of both community workshops. Level one A target five goal four, explore city hall civic center financing. Yesterday, we released our RFQ to design our city hall and library. Target one goals three and twelve. To ex- here we accomplished two goals, to expand our city webpage into multiple languages. Which now translates into a hundred and three languages. We also strive to provide public information celebrating our successes. And I'm proud to be on a team where we highlighted such exceptional women leaders in government on July the thirty first, two thousand eighteen. Where we highlighted our PIO, our Talent, Attraction Development Manager and our Community Development Director. Target two goal one, enhance community quality of life. Since May, we've had several notable events take place. For the first time, we had a two-day state of the city event. On July seventeenth, we hosted a business luncheon at the Eastville Community Center, and on July eighteenth, we hosted our community event at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. This year's event concluded with a taste of Eastville sponsored by The Chamber, and included many beautiful cultural presentations by the community's youth. Last Saturday, the twenty first, we held our biannual residential cleanup at Augie Ramirez Intermediate School. We had just about six hundred vehicles show up, some in rented U-Haul trucks, to bring their bulky items, E-waste and paper shutting. An upcoming event that we're excited about is our partnership with the Neighborhood Watch and having that celebration on Friday, October fourth at Harada Park. Target two goal six, to determine right-size staffing for public safety. On July twenty fourth, council approved an MOU to share funding of an additional school resource officer with Eleanor Roosevelt High School and Eastham Academy Campus. To help ensure the safety of all students. Target four goal, target four goal three, to continue to save money and expand reserves for future needs and goals. This summer, the clerk's office moved all of our records to a stor- from storage to a city-owned property instead of keeping the materials at this rental property in Norco. We estimate to have between five to six thousand dollars in savings. Council also established the hauler, waste hauler franchise agreement ad hoc committee. To begin negotiations with our current haulers, um, by the twenty twenty-two wind down of their contracts. We also have several goals and targets in process that will be completed hopefully shortly. Level one A target three goal one, to elevate dining experiences. In July, we had our official groundbreaking at Hamner Place. We were pleased to announce at our state of the city that Tony's Shop House, a concept by the Meat Cellar, and Hero's Restaurant. Hero's Restaurant and Brewery will be located at Hamner Place. On October twenty fourth through twenty seventh, we'll be hosting Cosetja at our property on Citrus Avenue. This will be a unique upscale dining experience with multiple courses of farm-fresh ingredients and Japanese wagyu beef. Please be on the lookout, the video announcement will be released shortly from renowned chef Steve Brown. On July twenty fourth, we presented the CDBG Business Incentive Program. Tonight, the city's Business Incentive Program was presented. Level one B target three goal nine, to explore hotel development. We were also pleased to highlight at our state of the city that Staveer Suites will have a home at Hamner Place. This four-star hotel will feature a conference center, rooftop bar and pool, and will be vegan-friendly. This hotel will also generate TOT, something that we currently lose to surrounding cities that have hotels. Level three, target three goals one and two, to evaluate traffic flow and evaluate the pavement management cycle. This summer, council awarded a contract to authorize a slurry seal project, which will be completed by December two thousand nineteen in the various areas throughout the city. Level three target six goal one, enhance mobility and connectivity. To help better serve the community, we're working on an extension of Limonite Avenue west of Archibald. We have selected the engineering consultant to design this project. Separately, we are pleased to announce that the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Limonite Interchange will be on November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Target one goal five, more implementation of community coffee meetings. We invite the public to join us at Coffee with a Cop. On Wednesday, October second, at ten AM at the Starbucks at the station off Cantu Galiano. Target three goal twelve, to explore CCA possibilities, community choice aggregation. Council voted to participate in the Western Community Energy Program on July fourth, July twenty fourth's meeting. Target four goal three, to continue to save money and expand reserves for future needs and goals. Finance Department will implement HDL software to further automate business registration. Currently, this process is done by hand. So this will not just save time and resources, but it will also enhance the customer experience. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Crystal, first and foremost, I wanna thank you for that presentation. It was great. It's, um. It it's great to have a strategic strategic plan, but it's even better when we have updates regarding it. So thank you for that thorough update and for for sharing that with us. Um, I. I love having this. It gives us true direction as to where we're going, so thank you. Uh, Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, Mayor, we have one public comment card from Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'm busy tonight. Okay, um, my background, um, my main career had been. Uh, corporate finance in the private sector. I actually was leadership level of uh some multinational firms. One of the things that we went through on a fairly regular basis was goal-setting and those kind of things. There was a term, I hated the term, but I'm gonna use it here. BHAG, big hairy audacious goals. And, you know, it, BHAGs. We were all tasked after meetings like what you went through on the strategic plan to make sure that we were focused. On all of the goals that were important. Um, in your plan, table of content shows. Fourteen uh goals that you ranked from level one A, level one B, level two and level three. And, um, I wanted to focus specifically on a priority level two goal, that I don't think I heard anything about tonight. Um, it was level two, target two, and I'm not sure of the goal, but it was regarding goal number one. Enhance community quality of life. And in that, it specifically talks about. Um, the community policing model and code enforcement, community uh policing. With a timeframe that things would be addressed in Q three, twenty nineteen, today. I don't think I heard anything on it, and, you know, in corporate world, we need to have. Action on all of the important things and updates when things are slipping or not changing. And a lot of discussion about the things that aren't accomplished and why. And, um, I did listen to the comments from the last quarterly one on the uh, the YouTube clip. I didn't hear much challenge or asking of other things, but I, I just wanna kinda suggest that we should be looking at everything, making sure of this progress. Thank you.
Great point. Mr. Jones, if you don't mind, can you give us a quick update, just as Mr. O'Connor asked about uh code enforcement and what's happening with code enforcement, if you don't mind?
You want me to keep it under five minutes or fifteen?
A brief, a brief one.
Uh, um, we hired a community enhancement and safety manager, Johnny Turfer, who who has worked diligently with our. Uh, community enhancement and safety team to reduce our backlog of code enforcement complaints. From something like twenty-two or twenty-four pages three months ago, down to uh, we're able to respond to first-time complaints. Within uh tw- twenty-four to forty-eight hours now. Uh, um, so we've been doing, working diligently to get the backlog out. Um, we still have a lot of follow-ups to do on that. Um, and uh, we just conducted our. Our first sweep as a team of a neighborhood, as an educational tool in a neighborhood, um, to, uh, um. Go out and identify throughout the neighborhood, um, opportunities to educate and share uh with that neighborhood. Ways that they could be improving and coming into compliance with the municipal code. Uh, um, so leaving the garbage cans out in front of your yard, having brown grass, um, having a inoperable vehicle. Uh, with a flat tire on your driveway, um, you know, cer- certain things like that. And so we have been working uh diligently uh to do that. Um, we are in the process of acquiring a customer management resource tool, uh, of technology, because we've been doing everything by pen and paper. Uh, a- and so we're bringing our, our community enhancement and safety team into the twenty-first century in in that way. So we can be a little bit more efficient and effective in serving uh our residents. Uh, I think it's October ninth is our next council meeting. Eh, if I'm not, eh, eh, and we will be, eh, it will be an official, it's code enforcement awareness, uh. Uh, sort of celebration week or something like that. Uh, it's a national, uh, um, thing that governments do. A- and we are gonna be showing some success stories, uh, uh, um, of of what we ha- have been doing and able to do. Through compliance wi- with our residents. Um, we made contact with like sixty residents today in our sweep of that neighborhood. Uh, um, a- and and they were very appreciative of learning how how they were slipping out of uh code compliance uh in the neighborhood. Um, and it's these little things that make great improvements in the community, so uh, I'm really proud of of the men and women of. So uh, I'm really proud of of the men and women of our, our Community Enhancement and Safety Team. Uh, they're doing an amazing job right now. Um, and w- we're always looking, a- as we say, we're, we're, some days we win, some days we learn, but we're always giving and trying our best. And um, so every time we're learning, uh, 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 we're always looking to win the next day. So um, we are uh making some great strides uh with how we're serving our residents through our Community Enhancement Safety Team.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Mr. Donahue, do we have any additional public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
I'm, I might just want to say, wh- when we put together the strategic plan last year, um w- we got pretty aggressive with some of those deadlines. Uh, um, uh, a- as you heard tonight, uh, Crystal uh had to take a lot of breaths because that report was long. Uh, um, a- and we are accomplishing a lot for our, our, our team size uh um a- and our budget and the resources that we have available to us. Uh, um, and we are maximizing that. Um, so um, while we set some pretty aggressive schedules on there, uh like quarter three of twenty nineteen uh um uh uh for, for many of these things, um, we uh, some of them haven't uh uh been achieved yet, but we've achieved others that weren't on the schedule because of opportunities. And so we've shifted some things around uh because we're a nimble entrepreneurial government. Uh, um, and so um, I just wanted to share that and highlight that. Uh, we will be coming back in November or w- at our next update, um, uh, probably in December or January. Uh, um, and we will um w- we will be um updating some of those deliverable dates, um, because we did get a little bit aggressive this year uh uh with some of our deadlines that we were thinking we could achieve things by. But when you shoot for the moon and you land amongst the stars, it's not something to complain about because we've been a pretty effective government this year.
Mayor Proton Plot?
Oh, thank you, Brian, for those comment. And thank you, Michael, for your comments. I think the, the, I think if we said the biggest, hardest, most audacious goal might be the, the, the uh, we call it the, the uh safety. I always get the community enhancement, safety thing, the code enforcement side. Um, I can tell you we're addressing it. It, you're right. It, it's, it is a, it's a tough one to get around. And I think uh, though the app is incredible, the E-Citizen app, it's also caused more volume of complaints to go up because now there's, there's greater accessibility now, it's easier, it's there. So um, I think investing in the technology, we need to hire more people, that's the answer, right? And and I think we have this, the right staffing for it, but I think having the right technology in place to create efficiencies to get follow-up, more, better follow-through, and we've been addressing this as a council and to end the city. And I would suggest too, if you ever are interested, um, back in the conference room and, you know, it could be another day, it could be with myself or Brian, whoever, one of the council members, to show you, there's a great map of how we're kind of breaking up that, that division and the kind of the subsets of, of that, you know, all the different things that we're kind of focusing on. But you're right, I, I think that is, that's been our toughest challenge is that particular area. And I think Johnny, who we've hired, is the right person to bring that on, and he's already making really significant changes. But yeah, we, we still got work to do in that area, and I know that, and I, and Brian's all game on that. We, we meet, we met several times on this particular area, so you're right. I, I think hopefully by the next quarter, we should have even more substantial um, um, I'm gonna say goals, but uh achievements to the goals to even further that, so yeah. But thank you for bringing that up because, yeah, I think it's, it's spot on. And thank you for the update, Crystal. Oh, by the way, Crystal, it's a four and a half star, a four. I'm just messing with them. I, I gotta get that half star in there at the, no, thank you.
I'll make the amendment at the next.
Any other comments? No further comments. This is a receiving file. And we will move on to item number nine point two, Financial Priorities Workshop Input Report. Mr. Jones, please.
Yes, um, we had a financial priorities community workshop uh per the direction of the city council uh to just discuss um, um what are the community values and desires for improvements, as well as when the community wants these amendments and enhancements. Um, um, eventually, um, i- if, if we don't make strategic investments to grow our revenue, um, we could see, a- and if everything stays as, as projected today, um, we could see projected revenues and expenditures crossing. And so we, when we see that, we, we say, okay, w- we can't continue to do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result. Uh, um, and so do we need to be doing something different to address that? Uh, um, a- and so, um, when we look at, I don't have my, can I have that? It's, there we go. It's like. So I have different slides and we're up there. Hold on one second. We'll go with here. So um, so, so the, the timeline uh is uh in November, we, the council adopted the strategic plan. In February, we had a community satisfaction, satisfaction study complete and presented to council. Uh, um, where we asked residents, would they support that? And I think it, it was about seventy-one percent. Uh, um, but um, I think there's an opportunity to dive into that question a- and um, and get greater clarity on that. In March, we presented it in the public uh to, in input from the public in the financial priorities at the council workshop for the budget. In June, the financial priorities community workshop occurred, and tonight, we're, we're reporting back on that, that workshop. Um, we pro- we promoted that community workshop through ads, billboard space, social media, e-notifications and websites. So we got it out as to, to as many people as possible. Uh, we had about fifteen attendees uh participate i- in that uh financial priorities workshop. And three point seven people viewed it live on Facebook. It was our first uh um, um, attempt at doing that. Um uh, financial priori- for, and we answered questions live uh from that uh Facebook uh. Uh, some of the top priorities as a- as have al- always been mentioned, public safety, uh, fire, medical response services and economic development. There were a couple of questions that were asked, how many people responded to this survey? Um, with the community satisfaction survey, uh, was more than twelve hundred uh participants. Uh, we were shooting for over a th- a thousand, a- a- and, and we got a lot more than that because of our, our great uh response rate in our community. Um, and if a tax is proposed, will, will there would be an oversight committee like Norco's Measure R? Uh, uh, and, and Quonan Norco Unified's uh Measure G Oversight Committee? And uh, then another question is, can we have a dedicated cricket field i- i- in the city? And that's an international sport. It's not a mainstream U- United States sport. However, we have about five hundred people that uh play cricket uh at Harada Park on Sundays and, and uh it was great uh to have that uh shared.
It's fun to watch too, if you ever have time.
So uh, few community members attended the workshop. The city does not have enough information fro- from the community input at, at this time uh to der- determine if a one cent local sales tax measure should be placed on a future ballot, a ballot. And what I would recommend to, to council is um, there are firms that actually dive into this question of um, would people be willing to, uh, what would people be willing uh, or what is important for people uh to uh approve a one cent sales tax measure? So if, if it were additional sales tax uh uh m- measure uh for additional law enforcement or fire or um, a city hall or a public library or something along those lines, um, you know, we can definitely look into that uh to find out um what that would be. Um, and the city should consider performing a statistically relevant survey just focused on uh, the, what are the financial priorities and really asking the question, what are the priorities and when do they want them? Um, because some things could take decades to get to the city, or we could move them forward if we had a little bit more revenue coming into the city. So um, but as a young city, um, sometimes you need a shot in the arm financially to help you get things established. Um, so the next step uh is, is, it would be just to perform a, a, a statistically relevant survey a- and work with the council on the questions that we ask uh, in that, um, so that we can make sure we have the right uh questions uh asked um to give you enough information on would council want to place something like this on a ballot? Um, but um, that's was the recommendation that we took away from the public safety priorities, community workshop input that we received.
Thank you for that report. Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
And council discussion. Councilmember Lorimer, do you have anything?
What? Um, more of a comment as opposed to a question. Um, I, I do not feel that we should be moving forward with asking residents as to whether or not to, to, to find justification to put a, an additional tax measure on the ballot. Um, I'm hoping that with new businesses coming in, we will be able to get more money uh from sales tax revenue, from people shopping in town, um, and bringing new businesses to town. Um, I know that we as residents pay a lot of money in property taxes already. And um, I don't see adding on to that as the path that I would like to see. So spending money to find an answer that will get us to a yes is not the path that I think we should be going down now.
Mayor Proton Plot?
Yeah, I, I kind of concur to the same words with Councilmember Lorimer. I think uh, we have a lot, and it's really on behalf of a lot of staff using, have generated a lot of successful opportunities that we're gonna be, being able to experience by next year with, with a ho- a hotel, possibly two. And then the whole point, as I mentioned earlier, at item seven point ten was, part of that, i- and Ernie may correct or wrong, but I, I think our, our, what we're projecting, I think it's like six or seven years from now, is our revenues and expenditures to meet a- at some point, which is pretty natural in, in just inflation.
If I recall correctly, it was, uh, I think fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, a- and I, and I think because of the success of, of the staff and, 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 and what's going on, we're, we're, I think we're gonna be able to extend that farther out. Um, and, you know, who knows what else, whether opportunities are gonna lie ahead, but I think we're, we're maximizing, to the Hamner Place, we're maximizing the generation of revenue when you look at square footage space, right? We're getting the most out of that land use that you, I probably, probably possibly can um out of that twenty-three acres. And I think when we look at it like that, I, I think we can avoid that discussion. But you're right, I think if we are looking for a library and we're looking for a city hall, that, that costs far more money than we have right now. So it bears the question, are we willing as a city to put that out a lot longer or not? Or is there other ways to find additional revenue to help pay for that? Um, a- and this, that's where the sales tax conversation is more valid, is if you want these things, are you willing, are you willing to pay for it? And, but I think for, I don't know, I, I kind of agree with the Councilmember Lorimer. I don't know if it's, it's now's the right time to be bringing that up. It's, i- I think we've caused some type of awareness where I think people thought there was an immediate, like, oh, my gosh, we're, you know, we're, we're in a, our financial, our finances are not bad. They're not, the finances are great. It's just in six or seven years, as cost of everything goes up, that's, and, and it's, and assuming that our revenues can stay the same, which aren't. Right, our revenues will continue to increase, especially with new developments, I, I think we're able to combat that, that meeting of the expense and revenue. So um, but again, just um, I suppose the third time I've said this, but I echo your comments, uh, Councilmember Lorimer, so, yeah.
Mayor Rigby, if I might just a- add in, when, when we did those projections, the RSO projections were a lot sig- more significant. And uh Sheriff Chad Bianco has done a really good job of ratcheting down the rate increases. And so s- instead of a seven to nine in- percent increase, last year was like a two percent increase or a two point seven percent increase, which is a big difference uh, uh, in how that, that our, our expenses, because our law enforcement costs are the highest budgetary, single budgetary expense in our, in our budget. And so we just, um, we appreciate the collaboration that we've had with the Riverside Sheriff's Or- uh, uh, office a- a- and working with Sheriff Chad and our lieutenant, uh, um, Tim Martin, uh, to uh ratchet down those uh rate increases. And we hope that continues for the rest of his uh term in office.
Councilmember Tsari.
Well, I just, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just uh echo what uh, what Councilman Plot said about uh this, because we've heard it several times about people saying that, you know, we're being alarmists and saying that five or six years from now, we're gonna hit that uh point where we're actually spending more than we're taking in. But all those projections are, they're done with uh, on the very, very, very conservative side. That's always how we have done it since we became a city. And we don't count revenue, we don't project revenue that we don't already have. But we do project expenses because that's what our contracts project to us. They tell us this is what the uh expected uh increase is going to be. So it does look like we're actually gonna have a shortfall, when we know in reality, we do have new businesses coming in. We have some that have already been established, that we haven't realized, realized the uh revenue yet. So things are gonna look better, but uh, so that's why it seems like it's doomsday when we look at the uh projected budgets. Um, and I, I agree, so I, I wouldn't have supported a tax myself. So I would concur with my colleagues uh regarding the need to continue with additional surveys. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Yau.
Pertz is going last. Everyone said exactly what I was gonna say, so I'll make it short. Um, e- exactly what, you know, col- all my colleagues said, I, and it's, it's since day one, I, I have not been a fan of the sales tax. So I don't see a point of spending more money on something that we should not proceed with. And, and a- as elected officials, we were elected by the people. And a lot of us, I know, we ran on fiscal responsibility platform, and I think it is our job to make sure that, you know, especially with all these new revenues hopefully coming in, I think it's important that we are planning carefully and not putting any additional burden on our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something?
I was just gonna say something after you talked.
All right. Um, I just have two quick comments. Uh, first is, great job to our staff. Because this, this would have been completely different if our staff hadn't been doing what they're doing um, in attracting these businesses. So I mean, specifically, not to discredit Brian, but sp- specifically to Gina and Kim um, for what they've done on the community development and the economic development. Um, i- if that hadn't happened, um, and I guess we do have to give credit to Brian because Brian hired them. Um, but uh, if, if we hadn't hired those two individuals, I think, right there, that we would have been in a different situation. So great job in that hi- in those hires, great job to those two people that are, that are doing such a great job. But I think it's a collective of our whole team that we have at Eastville, our staff, that, I mean, all the way from, I mean, finance to HR to PIO to, I mean, community enhancements, everyone is doing a good job. And our city attorney, um, keeping us out of, out of litigation to, to waste money. But I mean, I think it's just everyone working together and figuring out, how do we utilize our resources, including our time and money wisely to make sure that we're in a financial situation? Um, we're in the best financial situation the city's ever been in. Um, there, there's no doubt about it, and I think it's in, in direct credit to our staff and what they've done. So thank you for all that you guys have done in keeping us there and helping us to, to get where we're at right now and giving us a projection of where we are. Um, going back to what my colleagues have said too, I think if it weren't that way, I think our discussion up here would be different. I think we would be more in a panic, we'd be more, oh, no, what are we gonna do? But we have, we have a hotel coming, we have restaurants coming. Um, we have other businesses that we're negotiating with that will help to support those revenue generations also. So um, I could go on for that, but thank you to our staff for all that you have done in, in helping us get to this position. Um, on the flip side to this, there are certain things that we as residents have to realize that we may have to give up. Um, i- that we trade off, there's, there's a cost trade off to certain things. One of those big things is a city hall and a library. Um, how quickly or how long are we willing to wait to have that happen? Or at the same time, we need to continue, our, our staff is doing great work at looking at other options that we have that can help save us money to still get those public-private partnerships or whatever the case may be, to still get those amenities. But from a resident standpoint, like Brandon said, or Mayor Proton Plot said, we have to realize that some of those things may not happen as fast. Um, it's, uh, but I think it's, it's a smart thing to do. It's a smart thing for us to be financially responsible and to just be willing as residents that we do have priorities and we need to keep those priorities. And one of them is, our, our top one is public safety, but one of them is to be, remain financially responsible. Um, so in order to obtain those, we may have to um be patient on some other things. So just as a reminder, if that's uh the way that things go, we just have to keep that in mind.
So I heard loud and clear that we're gonna put this one and table it on hold. Uh, um, a- 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 and uh, and, and we'll revisit this in, in a future year if necessary. And between myself and Ernie Work and, and the finance team, we're keeping a really close lo- eye on, on these things a- as well as our projections. we're keeping a really close eye on on these things as well as our projections in the future. And and we will continue to highlight challenges and opportunities at uh budget workshops in the future um a- as we develop the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget next uh uh February, uh um which is just around the corner. So um just wanting to, um we always are looking out to the future and also giving people the opportunity to say if they want to uh uh have something happen faster, they have the option or opportunity. But right now, um we are going to park this one for a little while.
And we appreciate all that staff has done in in preparing this, researching this, setting up these workshops, allowing the public input. Um, so we appreciate all the staff has done in preparing this, as well as all the staff has done truly in making us to right now to avoid this situation. So great job to staff and thank you.
If if you wanna take an official five oh vote, you're more than welcome to. If somebody wants to make a motion, but it's not necessary.
I would prefer that we, I I don't think there's a motion necessary, Erica. Okay. Again, great job, staff, thank you. We'll move on to item nine point three, Public Safety Community Workshop Input Report. And once again, just for a reminder, this is on City Council Business under item nine point three. Mr. Jones, please.
Yes, um so for the Public Safety Priority Workshop, hold on a second. Beautiful. So um here we are, um similar path, uh the council adopted a strategic plan uh to take a pretty close look at law enforcement and public safety. Uh, February twenty ninth, we did a community satisfaction study where we got a lot of feedback uh when we asked of ways to improve the quality of life. Second to in in bringing in recruiting restaurants was to enhance uh our law enforcement uh presence. And we did experience ten additional hours implemented in May and an additional motor in February. Um, so both of those came after that study. So we're very uh elated that the RSO was able to bring those resources to our community that council approved uh the the prior February twenty eighteen. So we are excited that they uh uh came to our community um and are helping to improve our safety and response times. Uh, council requested uh in March at a pu- uh the workshop on the budget workshop uh on public safety uh to do a community uh workshop on public safety and what that meant to get greater clarity. And then here we are again September twenty fifth, bringing back the results of this. The community workshop outreach uh was done through ads, billboard, social media, e notification and um and our website. And we had about thirty attendees, including five RSO representatives uh at the Public Safety Community Workshop. And we had one point three mil- uh thousand people views, million people, we're popular, we're trending on Facebook. Uh, uh, one point three thousand views on Facebook uh to date. Um, and we had a lot of live uh comments and feeds that we provided, uh questions. And so um some of the top priorities that were discussed were the importance of having a substation in our community so that our residents felt like uh greater connection to law enforcement rather than having a substation on Arupa Valley that is uh a distance away on Limonite. Um, and then improving response times and and addressing costs. Key questions and comments, do Eastville deputies respond to other cities? Is Eastville charged for this service? Are are we able to ask lar- larger businesses to sponsor patrol hours? Um, and ha- and have we done a financial comparison with other similar cities? And so uh some of the findings or takeaways that we had were uh there were a few community members uh uh that attended the workshop, but we were very happy for all those that did. The city should, and we came to the conclusion uh that there wasn't an overwhelming crowd that showed up saying that we pursue should pursue our own police department at this time. And so this, and and one of the takeaways, the city should identify opportunities and funding to pursue creating a law enforcement substation within the city. And so uh the next step i- i- if I have um uh direction and head nods from from council is to continue to identify funding to pursue creating a law enforcement substation. Um, and and just tentatively, um we are well, after this meeting, there was an opportunity when I kind of uh sat down with the Lewis Retail Development uh uh that has ownership of Al's Corner at Riverboat and and Hamner that I was asking them to put something more than just what their intended uh use was on the property and and all of a sudden a building looked about the same square footage that when I was talking to RSO about what they wanted. And I said, wait, that square footage is the same as what we were talking about, maybe we could fit that on that property. And so we have had since sat down with subsequent uh discussions with both our Lieutenant Tim Martin, the Lieutenant of Planning uh from RSO, as well as the Lieutenant of the Norco Substation to understand what what they like about their substation or 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 improvements there. And so we're in continual, uh we we've been working on site design and development of that site to bring something back to you, to see if that's something we wanna perdu- uh pursue either as a lease or ownership uh possibility for our city. Um, so um we are working with closely with RSO because I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to have a unified uh Public Safety Command Center with Fire Stations twenty seven and uh uh an RSO substation there. So um just um that's where we've made headway uh since this July public workshop. And I wanna thank Tim Martin and his team for working really collaboratively with us on this. A- and also um for Sheriff Chad Bianco um who has really looked at the cost uh uh um of the county, not only his deputies and the services that they're providing, but a lot of the uh external costs um from different departments that charge to them um and and what that looks like. And so they're really ratcheting down uh uh and reviewing every penny in in the RSO budget, which is really nice uh to see, and they're working really collaboratively with a number of city managers in Riverside County.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, then council, do we have any discussion on this item? Councilmember Tisari.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I wasn't going to comment, but it would be, just keep it going. We can do this.
Thank you.
We'll find a way to finance it or fund it.
Councilmember Yow.
I I I vaguely remember, I I think we have talked about this. But remind me again, like just a ballpark number, like what, how much are we looking at?
It really depends on what we build and how we build it, um if we do a lease versus an ownership. Uh, um, a six thousand square foot or sixty five hundred square foot building uh um could be in the range of uh two to three million dollars to uh to build uh maybe four million dollars at at the at the high point. Uh, just depends on the the structure and the architecture and 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 the security that's needed. One of the benefits of being right next to Fire Station twenty seven is we have about uh forty five thousand square feet of or is it forty five thousand square feet or fifteen thousand square feet? Uh, right behind the wall in the community park, that's just dirt back there. Uh, um, and so there could be an opportunity to use the space that's behind Fire Station uh twenty seven or would be behind a police station a- and leverage dirt that we already own to create the secure parking for a police department um because that's a key component. Um, and so there there could be some synergy and leverage there uh with, because the fire station uh had more land than it was needed to dedicate um to build that fire station.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lorimer.
I echo Councilmember Tisari's comments.
Mayor Protim Plot?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, yeah, same thing. So I'll I'll keep it short, I'll I'll keep it short, but I'll just, there's a, I call these, I call them Brianisms. Because he has these, you know, has these sayings, like he just said it today, you know, now you shoot from moon to land on the stars. And it was a Brianism, but I I think this is a good example of of this, because you know, a lot of times you 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 kind of look at, hey, we're gonna talk about having our own law enforcement. Sometimes that leads to other discussions, you know, and 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 compromise and things like that. And and I don't know if we'd be talking about this if we didn't talk about possibly pursuing new law enforcement. It's it's relatively you you start having those conversations with Riverside County Sheriff, so it's being very smart now. And and I can remember this always coming up, like, oh, we'll never have a substation. I love those comments, we'll never have this, we'll never have this. It's a valid discussion right now, it's a real discussion. So, yeah, absolutely, pursue it. So I think it's a good thing. And sometimes we don't get what we want, but I, you know, you never know what you'll get at the very end, and I think this is, this could possibly be a really good opportunity for us. And also to save on our uh on our response times too, can be very effective on our response times without having to hire anybody. You know, so, uh, yeah, it would, this would be awesome.
Right now, we pay for an overlap uh because they need to travel here, and we always wanna make sure there's deputies so that there before they leave Eastville, the new deputies are on their way in uh um eh eh uh between shifts because they need to travel so far. So there is an overlap uh between the deputy shifts. Uh, um, and if that was here, they would be in debriefing. And if they got a call out of debriefing, they could be right in our city and right on top of the issue right away.
What other comment, if we are looking at this just from a an investment standpoint too, and and depending on what the cost of that land is, I I would look further to purchase that land um just because land is very scarce in our city and that creates value in itself, just having that land. So I think if there's an opportunity, um at least to purchase that land, uh if that's if that's a possibility. I mean, again, the numbers have to all pan out, but just I think that might be a better choice, you know, not having numbers in front of me, but yeah.
So we sold that land to the Lewis's and we might buy a portion of it back.
Exactly.
And um so we know what we paid for it.
Good information.
Or what they paid for it. And so I think uh with that, you know, we'll definitely evaluate uh um a purchase of the land or a lease of the land and and a purchase of the building and a lease of the of the building um so that we can allow council to make a a good fiscal responsibility uh 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 decision. So.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I think this is a win-win. Um, I I go back to the what the slide that shows the top priorities, I think that's only a couple of the top priorities. Um, I think there's a lot more priorities that we see that that fall into place once we start discussing a a substation. I think one of the the key ones too that can help with our community, help with our law enforcement is a volunteer program. We have a substation here, I think we, that that will help our volunteer program, I think, grow exponentially. We have a lot of retired law enforcement that are here in our community, that have nothing else better to do all day. Um, they would love to, uh they would love to volunteer um and be active uh with our our law enforcement, I think, traveling twenty minutes just to go pick up a car to come back to Eastville. Um, I think may deter some people. Some people. So if we if we get something a little closer, we can maybe get some of these people a little bit more active in our in our volunteer program. So I I'm excited for it, I think it'd be a great thing, I look forward to the further discussion. Um, and also, again, appreciate everyone working on this, our Sheriff's Department and working collaboratively with the city and working through this, and I look forward to uh us continuing. And I hope that we can continue to work towards this and see this come to to fruition. I think it'd be a great opportunity for our city.
So so the, I I do have a story to share, when we met with the Lieutenant of Planning for RSO, he said the county builds things in decades, and I said, well, we we build things in months. Uh, um, and and so he goes, okay, we, I understand the pace. So, um, so and and Lieutenant Martin said, he's not kidding. So if we make the decision to build it, we're we'll go full steam forward uh um and and we'll have something back to you. So we're working with Lewis to finalize that site plan and and some numbers so so that you can determine whether that that's the appropriate move forward. And and so far right now, I have a a consensus from the dais uh uh of five oh head shaking, yes, um that to continue down this path. So I and I wanna also reiterate that we, and something that we've said all along, and we mean wholeheartedly, we are very, very, very fortunate to have Lieutenant Tim Martin as our lieutenant in the Riverside Sheriff's Office and all the men and women that serve on the Riverside Sheriff's Office, uh, including our protection in the back. Uh, um, uh, um, but, um, uh to ha- have them patrolling our streets and and responding, so, and they're doing an amazing job uh addressing some um recent challenges that we've had. Um, and it's been great to see the collaboration between them and our neighborhood watch program, our our camera database program, our ALPR system uh um and and a lot of different uh programs and technology that we're collaborating to make them leverage their effectiveness.
Quick question on this, as we go to to build this, um, design, build, go through this whole process, would it be would it be worthwhile to have some sort of community workshop to involve the community in in getting something like this going?
If you're talking about architectural, eh eh um, sure. Uh, um, I I think as far as uh the the needs of the police station and the design of the police station on the inside, I I think um there's probably nobody better that knows that than uh than than RSO of what they need inside the building. Uh, um, but one of the things that we were evaluating is is do we want some kind of a community room or something like that? And so maybe there's an opportunity to either decorate or design that room or or the entryway, or or if we if um we consider public art or some kind of a memorial or something like that for this building. And I just wanna be crystal clear with everybody in the community that the community tree area will remain, uh, um, and uh there will be no community trees, uh, community food trees harmed in the building of this RSO station.
That was gonna be my next question and concern, because it was gonna go crazy if you were gonna touch those trees.
Yes, so 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 uh we're we're not gonna touch those trees. Uh, uh, um, and uh after uh Mayor Rigby slaved putting in uh mulch on that project with a tractor.
You weren't supposed to tell about the tractor. Real quick on that, I would like to see if we don't do a separate uh workshop on this, that at least we give the community an opportunity to discuss the community, if we do a community room, how that's set up. Um, I completely agree that the community should not be involved in the overall design of the building, just because there are intricacies that the Sheriff's Department, I mean, no one knows better than the Sheriff's Department as to what they need here in this area. So I don't think that part should be open to the public um necessarily for input, but I think it it should be, the community portion of it should be open.
Mayor Rigby, what I might suggest is that we take the the site plan and the architectural renderings uh to the Planning Commission and give the the community an opportunity to provide feedback on the architectural design of the building. And maybe if we do go through an architectural design process for that building, uh, um, that maybe we have a pre-design uh discussion with the Planning Commission, and then we bring it back for a site plan uh, um, so that they can have some early input into the the city uh a city building, uh, um, and then um some later post. Um, so maybe we either bring them some options or some concepts or different things, and they can tell us what we like. Half of A and half of B, can you combine them to do an A B version?
I think that's a great idea.
Great idea, Mr. Mayor.
Mister. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, um, I'd like to suggest maybe a joint committee meeting with the public safety and planning. That way we could get some input from public safety.
We can do that as well.
Thank you, sir.
I agree, I think it'd be good to take this to them and make sure that they have input on it also.
Lieutenant Martin wants to know if he can have a rooftop deck out of his office, so so to be built.
As long as we have access to it.
An indoor sauna would be nice.
All right, um, to proceed with this. Do we just, do we want direction or do we want a motion on direction?
I I've received all the direction that I need. And so unless you wanna take a formal vote, you're more, I've heard loud and clear what I'm looking.
Yeah, this is more for for feedback, there's no need for a formal motion.
Then I think uh staff is clear on direction from council on this.
Mayor Protim Plot?
Yeah, I just wanna make one suggestion, and I and I also wanna apologize, I I don't know who's all here for different items, but I know one particular, Mike Kraus is here. And I probably should have done this earlier, but I mean, his his, I know he's here for a very specific guy, I'm assuming nine point six. Can we, I'm just gonna make a move, if we can put that ahead right now to the next item and then try to the try the other ones after, if that's okay? So they're saying it's been here for a long time for that particular item.
Is that okay to move that? Do we need a motion and to adjust that?
You just take.
Just a
Or just consensus?
A head nod.
A head nod is fine, yeah, we ordering the agenda is is fine, it's just you're not adding a new item, so it's fine.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Then we will proceed now to nine point six, Eleanor Roosevelt High School Neighborhood Traffic Concerns along Citrus Avenue. And that is by, um, I think, Mr. Hemsley.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you honorable honorable mayor and council members, um this item is about the uh safe routes to school, I'm sorry. Wow, we're we're switching to nine points, thank you. So this item is was related to the concerns that have been expressed uh to council and to the the commission, the Public Safety Commission over the years uh with regard to um bypass of high school students coming through their neighborhood. And I can show you on this next slide, here's the issue here, is when when Sumner um when people come down Sumner Street, turn left on the Citrus Street and they see that there's a line to get into the high school, Eleanor Roosevelt High School parking lot, they bypass, they go down through um Estancia community and um past Desi Lane there and then go up and in into the high school to the north um there, and so what what we've um we looked at various uh ways of solving this this problem and some of the the byproducts of the of the students going through there is there's been concerns raised by the residents around speeding. Um there's been some some near misses, some of the residents have reported to us that they've nearly been hit by while getting into their car parked on the street. Uh there's, we've seen a letter out there. Um there's, we've noticed that when we went out there, we went out there with the with the school district, met them on site and we also noticed that there were, there are people that would drop off their students in this neighborhood. And some of the students aren't paying attention, they, we watched one nearly get hit by a car, so it's the the concerns are definitely valid, we confirm that. And then we we work with the district, in fact, John Von Driska is is in the audience here. Um has been coordinating with us to come up with a good solution for this. One of the things that we um we approached and and actually it was a pilot temporary barrier on Desi Lane. And um it was effective, we showed that there was about um a hundred less vehicles that were going through there in in about a twenty minute period. And so um we we but we did we did realize that we cannot do that temporary barriers only for an hour hour period and there's some other issues that uh were brought to our attention when we when we didn't go through that that pilot study, so we did look at for other solutions, some of the things that we considered, uh this is an overall view of the area. Eleanor Eleanor Roosevelt High School is is in the center there. Um one option we did look at was um in like increasing a drop-off area, there's a distance of about twenty-five hundred linear feet between Orange Street and Citrus Street. The issue that we found here is that the state architect's office would need to be brought in. Um and and that that is a fire lane there, it's only twenty feet wide. It would have to be widened, it's a very substantial cost to do that, so that's not a viable solution. Uh we we looked at maybe changing the signal to have dual left turn lanes in, so we uh take that queue down on Citrus Street uh sooner. Um so it was a shorter queue, a lot more to go in, so they wouldn't go around the neighborhood. And um there's some onsite issues that the school district had concerns about and so um we shelved this one. Uh and then the the last solution which we're recommending tonight is is to um modify the traffic signal at Citrus and the high school. And that would be to um first, you'll see that the the crosswalk on the west side of the intersection there is missing, um and so what we what we're proposing is that we would uh remove that crosswalk. Um have the students only cross on the east side of the intersection and then restrict the the movement of the uh the northbound to left and right only. And so what this will do eh eh is um it will shorten the time um for that portion, that phase of the cycle. Um and then allow more left turns in, right now what we noticed is when the when there is bypass that that goes on the amount of cars that were able to get in were shortened because of the call time on the south side. And so if we actually make this a hard improvement, then there'll be no incentive to bypass um Citrus Avenue, go through the community. So that there's a few phases that I'll walk through with you real quick and one is this north northbound movement. And then the next phase of the signal would be allowing the lefts in, that would be a longer uh longer time than is currently occurring. And then with this will be a split phase, so then there'll be um the eastbound and that movement and we'll also be allowing the the folks that are in the parking lot to to have a free right during that movement. And then we'll have the east-west movement and then the into the neighborhood. Um and finally, the coming out of the high school full movement, so. We believe that this this is a um effective, this will be effective solution in dealing with the issues in the Estancia neighborhood. Um the the Public Safety Commission did hear this last night and they um they recommend that council um direct staff to move forward with this project, we believe the cost is gonna be somewhere around eight thousand dollars to do it. And um in order to move this the crosswalk um we have to do, we have to post it according to the the California Vehicle Code for thirty days, so we'll post that after if you give us that direction. So then probably about forty-five days after today, we can get this implemented. And uh that concludes my report, John is here in the audience, if you have any questions from the school district and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that report and uh do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, uh we have one coming card from Mike Kraus.
Mr. Kraus, please.
Good evening, Mayor, my name's uh John Von Driska, I'm the director of facilities for the Crono-Narco Unified School District and just wanted to reinforce what Bill was saying about how we work together to come up with the this viable solution, has minimal fiscal impact and it also seems like it will resolve um the challenges that we have of the traffic coming straight across from that housing complex south of uh Eleanor Roosevelt High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi, I'm Mike Kraus, I'm a resident of Estancia. I'm a neighborhood watch captain, I'm on the board of directors of the HOA. Uh my partner Alan's not, he's not in the country right now, so I came here to um to listen and learn about this, cuz I just learned about this a couple of days ago. And I know that we've worked uh a lot, we've tried things because it's very unsafe, these kids are just um the parents are, they just drive crazy in there and um then the residents can't get out cuz there'll be a row of forty cars, fifty, you know, a lot of cars. And they can't even get out of their driveway to go to work, so you have to leave to go to work like half hour early or half hour late. Cuz you can't get out of, it's only two hundred homes in our area. Um sometimes we're lucky enough to have a motor officer sighting people cuz you're not allowed to make right turns onto Granja Vista del Rio from seven A to nine P, nine A. And sometimes we're lucky enough to have somebody there sighting people for doing that. But then we overheard him saying, just go in on Sumner, the officer's telling them to just come in on Sumner, well, that's counterintuitive, that's kinda against what we're working towards, so as long as um we have something, I think this might work too, cuz that's that northbound traffic into the school that they're zipping around. And they are zipping, you know, and then the kids park in the neighborhood too, they park all in a Desi Lane and there today, there's about twenty-four students parked there, cuz we have a private security in our neighborhood that we pay for through the HOA. And they keep statistics as well and we've got video proof, we've got all kinds of reports every day, twice a day from the uh from our security as to the some of the issues going on and particular drivers and but the kids walk in through the neighborhood too, you know, they get dropped off, like when you come in Sumner, there's a little walkway. That public walkway from um where does it go back one more? Oh, okay, anyway, there's a little walkway that connects the east and west side of Estancia. So a lot of kids get dropped off over there and it just messes up people, up the residents over there too, so you know, public safety is important and this is, I think this is a safety thing that that the um planning commission heard it and and the Desi Lane closure, it did work, you know, some people got upset, but they got used to it cuz it was closed for a few weeks. That was uh at the end of school year last year in June. Um but I understand that that's not viable now, so that's okay. Uh just as long as, I just wanted to be here to put a face to it, you know, I live there and uh I'm glad everyone's working together to come up with something. Um I like that it's not costing a lot of money, that it can be turned, that it could be uh implemented quickly. So I I it's just that's why I'm here, you know, just to say that it's important to us as a community. The people that live in Estancia are complaining all the time and you know, about the traffic and then they complain to security and then it gets back to the HOA and so we have to address this every meeting we have every other month and so um I don't know if you guys have any questions for me about it or.
I think we're good, if we will have questions, we'll we'll let you know in just a few minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Mr. Donahue, do we have any other public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
Alright, then at this time, we'll turn to council for discussion. As members, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that would have been my concern was if it was something that was acceptable, um and it appears it is. Uh the only thing that I would uh um stress is that there's gotta be an enforcement mechanism, it goes along with the change, so obviously, if uh we could have the motor out there and also with the school district, uh if if maybe having security out there at the intersection on the school side, cuz I know a lot of it is uh I I drive through that intersection probably two or three times a week during the um the morning hours when they're going into school and I see a lot of the kids, a lot of it eh the people are prevented from turning left in there because you still have kids trickling across the intersection, so the cars can't get in and out. Uh so maybe if security's there, just enforcing the actual walk, don't walk.
What we'll do when um we get notification or when it's gonna start, I'll notify the school that between Statham and Roosevelt proper, there's two uh two SROs that can assist with that. As we did, as we do anytime a school opens, if we do some type of traffic pattern change, the administration use, the school administration usually is pretty active with it and I do know in talking with them cuz I mess, I actually sent them uh that recommended change, said, hey, this will probably be happening, it may be hap- it's gonna take some approval process, but they were good with it and I'm sure they'll be on board to help support it.
Thank you, sir, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Y'all.
Um not just, I much needed and yeah, I'll keep it short.
Thank you, council member Lorimer.
Thank you, um I did have a a question on the presentation earlier, there were the uh there was on the um crosswalks, could could you bring that back up, pretty that 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 slide there? Um I wanna clarify, my understanding was that the statement was something along the lines of that it would be moved to the east of the intersection, does that mean over to Scholar or?
No, I'm sorry, uh yeah, so right now there is actually, this this exhibit shows only one like a stop bar on the west side of the intersection.
Yeah.
There currently is, I'll show you on the uh other.
It's it's a Photoshop picture.
There's two crosswalks there, so we're just gonna remove one of them, in order to do that, we have to give, provide thirty days' notice.
Okay, um I I'm certainly not an expert on this, which is why I'm asking um collectively uh staff here. I remember a rule as a child that if you if there is no crosswalk, but it is corner to corner, you can cross.
But that that's why we would put up a sign that says, do not cross here, cross at use the crosswalk. And once you put up a regulatory sign, then you can't cross there. Uh and the reason for that is so that the southbound right turn and the eastbound left turn can overlap and we can get greater capacity into the high school and out of the high school, um so right there. And if you have a crosswalk there, you can't have the overlapping phases.
Perfect, excellent, thank you for the clarification.
Mayor, put a ten plot.
I appreciate all parties getting together, I know it's, it actually seems pretty complex, so I appreciate all parties coming together, working and thank you, Bill, for all your hard work on this, so that sounds like it's eh eh hopefully should turn out to be a winner, so hopefully uh we'll just kinda measure that and again, kinda echo what uh council member Tisari mentioned, just let's focus on the enforcement side of it as well, or else really this doesn't fully get accomplished, so, thank you.
So I I have a quick question on a couple of slides before that, the one that showed the two left turns in. What are the concerns with that, because I'm not a traffic engineer, but my thought is you have two lanes going into the school that alleviates and gets more traffic, more cars onto the campus off the street faster.
Okay, the concern with this is um you see, you have the two turn lanes off Citrus but then as you go into the parking lot where you make the two left turns, that's not wide enough to have a car in the outside left turn lane and have a car coming south eh exiting that parking lot, I know that for sure, I happen to drive that. I went out to the parking lot and looked at that after Bill sent me this and then also, what will what'll happen is let's hypothetically say you did have two turn left turn lanes there, if you see the traffic flow as it goes along the school you have a t- you have two lanes going east, one has to turn right, one has to turn left. So if the traffic going left is okay, cuz it's gonna be on the curb side towards the school but the traffic going to the right, you're gonna have parents having to drop their kids off, then kids are gonna have to cut off in front go around in front of uh in front of traffic to get to the school site, DSA does not allow that, neither does CDE. And then and on top of that, after they would drop off, if they're coming south, they're gonna circle back around and they're gonna come back and then they're gonna have to cut across the two turn, two lanes that are turning left to try and get back out, there's no there's no good traffic flow, I think you would have, you would create a bigger bottleneck um not only on Citrus, but once you got inside of the parking lot. Currently, they turn in, they they go, they go down and around, they 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 hang a U-turn basically, once they come around, it's a right turn only. They go down and around, they come down along the fronts, the the backside of Roosevelt School, all kids are getting dropped off with the, on the curb side of the of the school, so it's safer for them. They loop back around, go past them and then they come down and out the uh lane, out the two lanes to Citrus. So yeah, we looked at this, um and then actually, like I said, the there's a multiple, multiple challenges with this one.
I think the key when we showed this, what what wasn't eh eh is is we went through multiple iterations and multiple ideas brainstorming this eh and and like you said, when when we looked at this and we evaluated it, it might have worked on the on-street. Uh but once it got into their parking lot, it wasn't gonna work and and eh you can only get in what you can get out and if you if you can't get out then it'll start backing up on the street and so what when um um cuz as he said, as you go in and you make that right to go where it says Roosevelt and go down, if you're thinking about going back out, you gotta cross over two lanes of inbound traffic, which would be pretty difficult, uh um if not impossible, because no one's gonna let you through uh cuz that's gonna give up their spot, so uh um um that's why we discredited that one.
Yes, council member, sorry.
I had a question also, thank you, sir. Um are we, I'm I'm sure this is probably a yes, but uh are we gonna make sure that we resynchronize the uh lights on uh Citrus and and Scholar to address the traffic coming out of the school site? Cuz I know that's one of the problems, that that light's red and everybody's coming out and it gets all backed up and so.
Yeah, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Make sure it works. That's better.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Council member Lorimer, do you have a question? I I have one more question, I and maybe I'm just being, uh I'm dumb about this, but um but eh eh I don't know, I have a tough time understanding that we aren't doing anything to add more lanes to get more traffic off, all we're doing is pretty much adjusting the timing, right?
By by allowing the northbound through to cross over and and making it really convenient to cut we're giving a lot of green time to this movement. A cycle for a traffic signal is, it has an infinite amount of time, it's two minutes at the max. And and so if we give thirty or forty seconds to this, then we're taking it away.
My voice is big enough, it'll pick up. Uh my voice is big enough, it'll pick up. Uh um it, the the northbound uh through. If we can take that away, then we can give that green time to the inbound left turn, which is the demand. And we can make it more convenient, which then prevents people, if we can serve forty or fifty more cars in that left turn movement, then we can. Um not make it more convenient to cut through the neighborhood. A- and and so when you're wanting to get somebody to do something right, you wanna make it more convenient than the 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 D two route. Because cutting through the neighborhood is actually longer uh um distance-wise, but it's shorter time-wise. Uh um and because it was triggering that signal, uh um it was taking time away from the eastbound left turn into the school. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. No, that totally makes sense. Thank you. And just a quest- question, I guess, and I don't know if you're able to answer, but from. Estancia neighborhood HOA, are they fine with this recommendation with eliminating? The through to the the school there, that parking area? Uh I think it's one of those things, it's kind of a trade-off. It's what do we do? We have to do something. Are we willing to do that to eliminate the traffic or minimize the traffic? Anything's better than nothing, right? All right.
I I think the key point is is, you know, we did a pilot project to to close off Desi Lane to see really how many cars were cutting through this neighborhood. And we i- and it confirmed what the HOA was sharing with us. We also confirmed some of the speeds that were going through there and we saw some of the tire marks going through there. Uh um as some of the high school students were checking out how good friction was with the asphalt. Uh uh um uh they're East M Academy students. Um and um and so I think. What we need to do is um uh try this out and continue to evaluate it. And 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 if this doesn't work, we'll come back and try something else uh or make minor modifications to it.
If this does go through, just please keep us posted on the Estancia area, just from a resident H way perspective.
All right, then if there's no further discussion, then I would look for a motion on this item.
I was I was just gonna say, Mr. Mayor, if they had given this as a STEM project to the kids, they'd have figured this out a long time ago.
Ouch.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Donahue.
Council member Yao?
Yes.
Council member Lorimer?
Aye.
Council member Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Proten plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
As I would say, that comment is weak sauce.
Those kids will.
You gotta W.
Thing if you challenge them.
All right, we'll go back to nine point four safer route to school and pedestrian safety improvements on sixty eighth street. From Wellspring Road to I fifteen Bridge. And Mr. Hemsley, please.
All right, thank you. Yes, this item uh was uh brought to Public Safety Commission. The uh resident came to the Public Safety Commission in May and expressed concern about her student. Getting to the local elementary school in Europa Valley. And the route that the student was taken was up from the south of the sixty eighth street up Wellsprings. And then uh going to the uh east and then crossing the bridge. And there was concern that the um, there's not a walkway, so she was asking that a walkway be, a sidewalk be added to the bridge. Uh staff looked into that and um there's structural issues, it's not a, it's not a feasible solution. And so uh staff looked into another way of providing a safe route to school. And we looked at revising the striping since we do have a story seal project that is gonna be, it is actually underway. Uh we thought maybe we could revise the striping to make this a little safer approach for. The pedestrians coming from the south side of sixty eight to the north side of sixty eight. And and by moving the transition um from where the bridge is now to just west of Wellsprings. So that there's, it would remain two, two lanes uh coming from the bridge uh to to Wellsprings. That would allow only two lanes of traffic for the pedestrian to cross over. Um making it uh easier, safer, and channelizing the 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 vehicles so that. They're not, you don't have two lanes of traffic. Um there was um a recent um. Resident had expressed concern that there with a two, with a two, two lanes of traffic there. Uh one person had stopped waiting for the pedestrian to cross. The other person blew through the stop sign and just nearly missed the uh pedestrian in the crosswalk, so. Having only one through is is definitely a safer way and that's what we're we're proposing with with doing the striping. And so um we're with this project, we'd also take advantage of that and add bike lanes and um. So we can make this um just taking what the city's approach is for making this a more walkable and bikeable community. And so um with the timing of this, since like I mentioned that the uh story seal project is already underway, we think within the next four weeks if council approves this. That we could get it done. Uh Public Safety Commission is on board with with this and um. Would recommend that that council move forward with it as well. That concludes my report. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, council discussion. Council member Lorimer.
Thank you. Um appreciate the presentation. I I did have some concerns about this um that. Been communicating with the city manager on this uh since yesterday. Um specifically. I believe it's Tara Street, it's not labeled on there, T A R A H, it's the first street.
Right.
West of the the bridge on the north side. Um. My concern relates to people getting out of there right now. I I drove it myself, I'm not a traffic engineer, but my concern is. If you take what is now two lanes um and you move it to one at that location. If people with traffic flow coming through there, if they will have to wait um for too long to exit their track. Um and I understand staff was looking into that today, but if you could please. Um give any insights that might have been gleaned from examining that question.
Sure, thank you, council member. Um yeah, so we did study that. We we took counts this afternoon. Um afternoon traffic is always higher. Um it's peak traffic is higher than morning. So it's the the best um traffic to study. We found that the maximum wait time currently. Um for turning right out of that neighborhood on Tara Street is ten seconds. Um the turning left movement was a little little longer. I think the maximum we found during that the peak. Two hour period was um sixty seconds, but that wouldn't change. It it may even be less with only one lane of traffic there than than two. Um the the general plan um calls for an ADT for a two-lane roadway collector such as this. This is now four, but if it were two, the capacity would be fourteen thousand uh vehicles per day. Um we measured out there that the the um traffic is um about eleven thousand vehicles per day. So two lane, it it ha- it can handle um the the amount of volume, traffic volume that's out there.
Thank thank you for that. Now you, in your comment, you said it might even be faster. I believe, that's going. If the person is heading south, going, making a left-hand turn to go east. Um that that might be faster, but the person that is trying to go south and then west, making a right-hand turn out of the track. Um in that they don't have. While you were making this timing, was it thought about that what if this were one lane as opposed to? The two lanes that you're doing the timing on right now?
Yeah, it was just existing conditions, how we looked at it now, so. Uh one approach that we could, that we could look at, I have an exhibit here. Um what we proposed right now is just one lane. But we could also do an acceleration lane, which is um the the exhibit on the bottom here. So that would allow them to to be able to get out and then to merge into into traffic, so that would alleviate, I believe, alleviate your concern.
Can can you share how many, we we counted for two hours, how many cars were making that southbound right turn?
Uh um. Yeah, well, it was like um maybe ten cars. It it there wasn't a lot of, a lot of cars there making that turn.
There's the, there's three exits from that subdivision, uh uh and so we were kind of uh looking at. How how many people were coming and going out of there. Uh when when we, I think there's like a hundred and twenty homes in that. Subdivision or a hundred and thirty homes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh um a- a- and so using, you know, roughly thirty to forty percent of those homes, it generate about four hundred. Trips a day or something like that? Uh uh um and so when uh coming out of this driveway, um and so when you divide those up over the peak hours. I think uh if it was forty-five homes were using this exit, it generate about forty trips in a peak hour or something like that.
For both directions, yeah.
Inbound and outbound.
I I I do wanna say thank you for taking the time to look into this, spending two hours out there. It's um. I'm sure not not a lot of fun counting traffic uh cars going by.
They like to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um so thank you. I my biggest concern on things like this is we have great infrastructure in a lot of places in our city and um. Don't wanna do harm to something that's working right now. I I understand about safety, we want safe streets, absolutely, just. Um but as staff, you recommend that these concerns are not a concern, we're we're good, that people aren't going to be negatively impacted.
Yeah, I that's.
Yeah, we're basically just shifting where the transition, instead of happening two hundred feet before the bridge where it's two lanes. A- and there is zero funding at the state or local level to widen that bridge and there's really no demand for it. So state and federal wouldn't s- fund something like that if there isn't a demand to widen the bridge. And until it becomes a structural deficiency. Uh um but instead of having the transition happen right before the bridge. We're just moving it right before Wellsprings, so that the kids only have to cross one lane in each direction rather than two lanes in each direction. What what we were finding is, as Bill shared, and we've had a couple complaints, we we actually got a complaint. From the mayor o- over the weekend from somebody at a soccer field. Uh uh um.
It wasn't me complaining, it was me relaying a complaint.
Yes, sorry. Uh um so it's one and the same. He makes it up. I heard a story. Uh uh um um but uh um about. The the challenges out here a- and he said, are we get, like, is there anything we can do about Wellsprings and sixty eighth that I said it's in your agenda packet? Uh and he goes, oh, wow, okay. Uh um so he just hadn't read the beautiful agenda packet yet.
That that concludes my questions for now. Thank you.
Council member Tesari? Council member Yao?
So my my biggest question is i- on this is that bridge there is one lane each way. As you go into Europa Valley, it looks like that they are planning for the future for it to be two lanes each way. As we do this, this is just striping and striping only. We are not taking away any asphalt, we're not planning on taking away any asphalt. We're not planning on putting any infrastructure in to reduce the asphalt space. We're just doing it re-striping. I hate to say it's temporary, but it very well could be temporary until something is done with that bridge, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
I- i- if if at any time in the future that bridge was widened to four lanes, we could put four lanes of travel right onto this roadway. I- i- it's not taking away any lanes, we're just shifting where the transition is occurring and shifting it to a safer place. Uh before the kids are crossing the roadway, um so that the the motorists aren't having to make a challenging decision. Uh of I'm merging with traffic and I'm looking for kids for crossing the roadway, which are are looking for two different locations.
Perfect. The only other question that I have is, is when we do that back at Wellsprings Street. Can we, will we add on the signs pedestrian crossing or anything like that? Will that be on those signs?
Well, there will be um a sidewalk closed sign that so that they don't.
That's not what he's asking.
But you're asking at at the.
Regarding pedestrians, you know how some intersections, you see a sign that says pedestrian crossing? It's just an extra where it's the the person that talked to me on Saturday just asked if there's any. Additional signage that we can add to make drivers aware that pedestrians are crossing in that area.
With the striping out there, we we could actually even put in a high-visibility crosswalk or something like that. Uh 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 and add a little bit of enhancement to that crosswalk. Uh um there i- that intersection isn't always stop intersection today. Um and so just reducing the distance that a pedestrian has to cross uh r- two lanes rather than four lanes. Um i- is is a fifty percent decrease in 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 the number of travel lanes that that they're having to cross. And the exposure that a a youthful uh student is is uh exuberating on their way to excitement to learn, so.
Perfect, yeah. If we could do some sort of high-visibility or or additional signage or something, that'd be, that'd be great. So I don't have anything further. Then I would be looking for a motion on this item.
Move approval with the uh condition that we put in the high-visibility crosswalk.
Second.
Mr. Donahue.
Council member Yao?
Yes.
Council member Lorimer?
Aye.
Council member Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Proten plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to nine point five, an always-stop at Sumner Avenue and sixty eighth street, and we'll keep it going with Mr. Hemsley.
All right, thank you. This item was uh um asked by uh city council and Public Safety Commission, asked the uh staff to review this intersection. Uh there's uh several concerns that come up. Staff reviews various intersections on a periodic basis and. So we conducted a warrant study and uh we found that the uh intersection did meet warrants. Um there there, excuse me, there were seven crashes in the last year that occurred there. Five of those. Um met the warrants to install a stop sign um there, based on the type of crashes. They were broadside type crashes. And then it does meet the minimum volumes uh required by the warrant analysis. And the sight distance, there's some of the um accidents had reported that the um, there was a bus. That prevented them from seeing the oncoming traffic, so sight distance uh requirements were met. To install a traffic uh s- stop sign there, and there was also left turn conflicts that occurred. The two crashes that occurred there, excuse me, sorry, that um. Were not supposed to be or not qualified, were people pulling out and then stopping and the person behind them uh rear-ending them. And so I believe those, even those those crashes could probably be averted with a stop sign in this location. And so here's the proposed layout for stop signs. We'd be redoing the striping to make it more visible. Um changing, moving the arrows forward closer to the stop legends. Uh to to change that and bring it to the attention of the drivers. We'll also, with the new stop signs, we'll be adding flags. To highlight those. Those flags tend to wear out in about six months and so. Um after six months, we'll take them down. That should be plenty of time for for the public to be aware of this new. Um traffic management uh control control here. Also, um RSO will be. Um notified when this is up and will be um helping the public to be aware of what's happening here. Um part of the design includes uh when you do a modification like this, um the ADA law requires you to install a ramp. And so it does include installing a ramp on the on the uh west side of the intersection. If uh this is approved, then we believe that it could be done. It's also part of the story contract, could be done within the next four weeks. And that concludes my report. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions? Comments? Council member Lorimer? Oh, I'm sorry, one second. Public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have two comment cards. Uh first one's from Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd like to comment and piggyback on something that uh council member Lorimer said about unintended consequences. When I reviewed the seven accidents that have been at that intersection in the past year. Two of them involved sight problems because of a bus parked just south of that intersection. I drove through that section of street today and I noticed that there's a bus stop. Very close to the intersection of Slishman and Sumner. And another bus stop very close to the intersection of sixty eighth and Sumner. And I wish the other person from the bus place was here, maybe he still is. Um I wonder if those two stops could be maybe consolidated into mid-block on Sumner. As maybe a larger bus stop for multiple routes. I don't think it's a big distance change from either one. And it would take the bus away from the intersections when it stopped, providing. And it would take the bus away from the intersections when it stopped, providing better visibility. Um I'm also just generally concerned that adding another three-way stop kinda slows down traffic. It adds to congestion, not far from the intersection of Sliceman, it might, it's not a big, big deal, but. I was very happy actually when the city put in the stops of the uh signaled interchange at sixty-fifth and Sumner. Which is very close to my house and I think that improved a lot and it was much better than having this always stop. So um that's kinda my thought, I I also just wanted to comment, the the header on this said it was sixty-fifth and Hamner. I confuse Hamner and Sumner a lot and just as a comment, if anybody ever wants to think about renaming Sumner. Kinda like how Cleveland had been renamed for Scholar. I think if we as a community think about something that's really symbolic of our community. That's a great street to think about, cause there are no businesses there that would have impact, it would just be traffic signs and so on. That's just another side comment, I always wanted to bring up in a a time talking about that street, thank you.
Thank you. Mister Donahue.
Next speaker is Keith White.
Mister White.
Um let me explain something, Route Three puts a lot of kids right there at sixty-eighth and um Summer. You have college kids getting on there, you have, so those two stops are very popular, you have people getting on at Sliceman. The problem is is right there at the corner, the RTA has to reason why there, because they have to make sure. That the the signal crossstop signs there, okay, so. We need bus stop signs, should not be, cause if you go before Sliceman, there is no sidewalk before Sliceman Summer. Before you cross over Sliceman, since you cross Sliceman, there's a sidewalk right there. People use that stop a lot right there, since you cross Sliceman S two, now you're going southbound, there's a stop. Or so you make a left turn on the Summer, people use that stop, my concern is to make sure we have some crosswalks. That crosswalk should be like a U shape, cause sometimes these kids will jaywalk across. Sixty for Summer, just to try and catch a bus, so there's a safety issue there. So my concern is the stops should be just fine, I mean, if he wants me to, I mean, the Sliceman stop, if you have sidewalk. Before Sliceman, then there probably will be a problem and they can use the. Bus stop back a little bit, but there's that's those two stops do get used a lot by the high school kids that are going to Roosevelt and RCC. So I've seen it every day, cause I write I write three line sometimes, so I see it, I see it, so I know what I'm talking about. So that's my concern, is maybe having sidewalks like a U shape, because do they, cause if they're gonna try to run and catch the bus, they might jaywalk and. They might get hit by a car, so instead of having just once, one crosswalk and another crosswalk, we should have crosswalks like U shape, that way. It might prevent people from getting hit by cars and stuff, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Donahue, do we have any further public comments?
No, Mayor.
Now we will turn to council for discussion, any questions or comments, Councilmember Lorimer? Um yeah, thank you, um I appreciate the public comments um as well in the presentation today. I I do, I I have concerns about um adding this, I I understand we're we're looking for safety. Absolutely, um but at the same time, there there is a thing about traffic flow. Um and this is getting back down into re- residential areas where. People have been on the road commuting, long day and there's another stop before getting home, I mean, it's gonna be a brief stop, but. I'm curious, I I did have a question for staff uh related to alternatives, um specifically. And again, I am not a traffic engineer, but I I look at it and I'm wondering, could in order, if there are questions about line of sight. Could we, was a parabolic mirror considered, something like that on the opposite side of the street? Um for people going west on sixty-eighth?
No, we didn't consider a parabolic mirror, um.
And I I don't know if that would be the answer, I just it it's something that's been in the back of my head.
It's typically not a solution for an intersection of this size and magnitude on a four-lane high-speed roadway.
Yeah, might be better for like a two-lane on a curve.
On a curve, on a rural roadway.
Right.
Country road. They usually put them on trees.
Um okay, uh well, yeah, I I just. Oh, while while we are on this subject, uh one of sixty-fifth and Hamner was brought up earlier and um. I've been meaning to get back to staff on this, uh on that, that is one of the unprotected lefts that we have in town. And while people have been learning that it is an unprotected left, um it is not necessarily ingrained with everybody. They might get lazy, forget, uh and so if there could be an extra indicator applied at sixty-fifth. And Hamner on that stoplight there, uh if it is justified, uh but if staff could look into that. That'd be great, thank you.
There's a lot of solutions that that many cities are doing with like the the blinking flashing yellow or something like that, rather than just the green ball. Um to bring more awareness, so we can look into different solutions.
And I did wanna mention too, um the Public Safety Commission did review this and they approved, they wanted to move forward with this. Um one of the, one of the questions that they asked was, you know, what's the intensity of this and this? The RSO had to did confirm that this is the the worst intersection in terms of accidents in the city. So it does warrant um moving ahead with this.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Plot?
Councilmember Tsarri? Thank you, Mister Mayor, I was just gonna go back to uh what the gentleman said about relocating the uh bus stops. Um is there a possibility of maybe just shifting the bus stop back? Where the bus is actually gonna stop, just moving it, you know, twenty or thirty feet from the corner?
Yeah, we could look into that, we'll work with with the RTA with that. Um but I, that was not all the accidents, that's only a few.
Right.
I still believe that this needs to, you know, move forward.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to what what we're doing, actually, I'm I'm and I'm okay with it, but. Moving the uh bus stops back might, you know, maybe there will still be a line of sight problem for somebody who actually stops. And then they go, cause they didn't see.
Definitely look into that.
And and should this intersection meet traffic signal warrants in the future, we could always eh eh change the always stop to a traffic signal, it's kind of an incremental thing. That you go from a minor street to a always stop to a tra- uh to a traffic signal if it doesn't quite meet the traffic signal today. And it doesn't, and and a traffic signal would take eh eight to twelve months if not more to. Once funding and every, and then to get designed and whatnot, so we can work, we can continue to evaluate whether the traffic signal warrants are met. So that cars don't have to unnecessarily stop uh on uh Sumner uh um in the future.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes, I I I know Brian and I have been bugging you about this for quite some time, um it was actually, so to give my colleagues some context. Um I, a lot of the residents to, oh gosh, I have so bad a direction, but in my district, district four. Um ch- which basically a lot of residents who live there, they actually have complained about that intersection, they have requested for stop signs. So I don't think they would mind taking a few seconds to stop. Because they actually have complained about the amount of accidents that have occurred there, um and this, they have sp- re- specifically requested for this. With that being said, I do have a question regarding Mister White's comment, what is a U-shaped crosswalk? Also, that's the U-shaped part of that.
It's just basically having a crosswalk on the south side, so it makes a U-shaped.
So it's li- literally that, I'm it's.
So so it's right here.
That's, okay, got it.
So so i- i- if the council wanted, we could put another crosswalk and a ramp on that side as well, so that all approaches to the intersection have a crosswalk.
It would, it would add another, you have to put another ADA ramp, which is about three thousand dollars.
Councilmember Lorimer? I I wrote it down, it it got in my head talking about misstating street names, it's sixty-fifth and Sumner, I'm sorry. That that street light there, I said Hamner, I believe, and I wrote it down incorrectly, I'm assuming I read Hamner. Sixty-fifth, Sumner, for the stoplight.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mayor Proton Plot?
No, I appreciate all the comments, um yeah, I I think I I agree with, I I think, I I agree with Bill's comments and what needs to be done on this. Eh as far as the, as far as what we do with the bus stops, I can, we can work with Joe and and Rohan over at RTA and we could probably, I can, I'll I'll be there tomorrow. So um we have our, we have our board meeting tomorrow, so I can, I think it's a separate item that is, I I look at that as kind of something separate from this. Is 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 having that bus stop and it that, I think legitimately does need to be looked at, though, I think I think the points brought up are valid. I think we, I think I would just look at this separately as far as bus stops and look at this as one other separate item. But tomorrow, I think, Joe just sounded curious, are you gonna be there at the board meeting tomorrow? Okay, so we we can sit down with the three, me, you and Rohan and maybe kind of address these items and kind of go from there.
If you don't mind, can you come up to the microphone? And and gotta repeat what you just said, it's valuable, that's.
Yes, just for full disclosure, RTA would be a beneficiary of this project as we make a left turn at that intersection from sixty-eighth to head south on Sumner. So we would benefit from the protection that this uh, you know, controlled arrangement at the intersection would provide. And we're happy to look at the bus stop issue, um more than happy to coordinate with Bill on on that.
Yeah, if we if we find out it's it's something that if RTA determines like, hey, you know what, this this is unsafe, I think that's a good trade-off, hey. We took care of this crosswalk and if it's something where we need to just rearrange where the bus stops, so I think that's a good trade-off.
This is one of the very rare occasions where we actually have a forty-foot bus making a a left turn unprotected. And uh we'd dearly be uh grateful to remove that risk for our agency.
Yeah, and just for the record, can you state who you are?
Yes, Joe Forgierini, I am Director of Service Planning and Scheduling at RTA Riverside Transit Agency.
Thank you, and can you do me a favor and just fill out a comment card, just so we can have that, do we need that or no, okay?
We have one from him previously, so we'll just add this number to it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? I'm uh looking at this, uh I was just looking at the overall satellite map. Um just as a reminder, this is just down the street from one of our largest parks in the city. So if we can get traffic, I know it's not always ideal to slow traffic down, but sometimes it is worth slowing traffic down for the safety. Of our residents and I think if we could slow traffic down in this area that is right next to one of our largest parks, where. Our youth, our kids, our families may be crossing um that intersection there, that I I think it would be good to. Put this in to help slow that down and control that intersection a little bit more, a little bit better, so. That's all I have to say, looking at this too, I mean, this could make just the walkability in that area a a lot better too. Um there's an easement right there, I I know a total separate issue, but there may be some future thing we can maybe do at that to connect things. Um right there at that intersection to make it more walkable, so. If there's no further comments, then I would be looking for a motion on this item.
So I move.
Second, Mister Donahue.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
No.
Councilmember Tsarri?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Ma- Mayor, if I if I might just highlight, uh these were all uh complaints that uh came either through the Public Safety Commission or City Council. These last three or four projects that were presented through Public Works, a- and they all happened in about the May-June timeframe. At different, various meetings from either residents or council members or commissioners, uh uh and sometimes a combination of all of the above. Eh eh and I I wanna thank our Public Works team and our Community Development Director uh for getting these expeditiously to you. Um so that we can look for some safety solutions uh and to improve uh mobility in our community, so I I. And safety, cause public safety is not just about law enforcement and fire, it's about designing our streets correctly. Um so that we can enhance the the safety uh and allow people to make the right decisions out there.
Thank you. Moving on to city manager report and city staff report, Mister Jones, please.
Well, our econ- our Economic Development Department hosted a business success roundtable on Tuesday. The business success roundtable meetings are held every two months and are open to all Eastville businesses. The meetings are a great opportunity to learn about businesses in our city and how the city can serve them. Any interested Eastville business should contact our Economic Development Manager, Kimberly Wright. Uh last week, Cosetta San Diego did a video shoot at the Offledge property uh on Citrus across from the street from the high school. To highlight their upcoming Eastville e- east uh Eastville estate dining experience, that's a big, almost a. A bunch of ease there, almost like exceeding Eastville's expectations every day. Um with with Chef Steve Brown on October twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. The event will feature a nine-course tasting menu that includes the best wagyu beef from around the world. Local seafood and produce from the Cosetta San Diego farm, uh along with delicious wine pairings. Cosetta San Diego will be sharing a video on social media within the next week, tickets are available online for purchase at chefstevebrown.com. Um and Chef Steve Brown is actually a local inland empire, a a young man. Uh that uh traveled the world learning culinary expertise and he's wanting, this will be the first time he's ever cooked in the inland empire. Um so he said, eh 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 as he said, there's kind of a fine dining desert in the inland empire and I wanna come help. Bring this back to my home region, so um this is a a great uh pop-up dining experience that he's doing, so we're excited about that. Um and we're excited that he chose the city of Eastville and largely because we've created a great food dining buzz here. Uh and and he wants to be part of the food scene. Um si- since this twenty-twenty address canvassing, as we heard earlier tonight, is still taking place in Eastville neighborhoods. Through October fourteenth, two thousand nine, please participate so that we can help contribute to the most accurate census count. Hours are from eight AM to eight thirty PM, um and please make sure to ask them for to see their ID before you open up the door. Um there's been a lot of chatter uh about whether somebody is a census worker or not. Um and we don't want somebody to be scammed, but we do want you to participate. The residential cleanup and paper shredding event this past Saturday was a huge success with nearly six hundred participants. I- i- in this event and we had some people make multiple trips there, so uh they were able to put their car back in their garage. Uh International Car to School Day, or Car to School Day, Walk to School, that's a Freudian slip. Uh uh International Walk to School Day, Wednesday, October second. In the morning, we encourage everyone, not just on this day, but every day to walk and bike and scoot to school if you can, so. Um and the Coffee with a Cop, Wednesday, October second at ten AM at Starbucks at the station. Join in on the coffee and conversation with our, with your local deputies. Um Neighborhood Watch Celebration, Friday, October fourth at six thirty PM at Harada Heritage Park. Um the anno- annual Fall Festival, Saturday, October fifth. Um from three to ten PM at Harada Heritage Park, we'll also be celebrating our ninth birthday as a city that event. Um and the Eastville Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation Dinner will take place on October twenty-fifth at six PM. At the community sem- center and the entire city hall staff would like to wish uh. Joe and Clint a very happy birthday as they both celebrated some milestones this year, or this this last week and so. Uh um but they asked for no sweets because they're watching their figures, so uh uh um uh um so we got them a white flat coffee.
Thank you, all right, we will move on to committee reports. League of California Cities. League?
Uh there was a golf tournament um last week, it was awesome, missed you guys, so. Oh, I I I didn't, I, it was great.
Thank you, Skag.
Uh just to add to the uh league, um our our representative, Erin Sassy, she uh she got married.
Yeah?
Yeah, so.
On my birthday.
Hey. Should've been invited.
Right?
Yeah, uh Skag actually had an orientation over there this morning and uh.
Uh, Skag actually had an orientation over there this morning, and, uh, uh, one of the things that they brought up was the fact that we can resource their staff. So anything that, uh, we have issues with, uh, they said that, uh, our staff is welcome to reach out to their counterparts. Uh, and you may be able to help them out with something too, so, they have an excellent staff over there, almost as good as Eastville's. I'm sure that.
Almost.
I'm sure the director is afraid that if we do start interacting, we may start snatching up some of their employees to work here, so. And I did get this, uh, they did a workup on, uh, demographics and statistics related to the city of Eastville, so I will leave this. In the, uh, office, you guys are welcome to peruse it. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. WR cog.
Next meeting is next week, that's, uh, so at this time, there's nothing to report from the cog.
Thank you. RTA.
Yeah, no, no comments, no, but we do have our board meeting tomorrow.
And WCE, we have not met since our last city council meeting, so nothing to report there. Uh, Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Uh, we did not have a meeting this month, uh, next meeting will be the third week of October. Uh, however, they did spray in a different location than usual, away from the river, and, uh. It caused a bit of, uh. Excitement. So.
Just to kind of echo, and just to kind of, um, go back on that, there was someone that did cause some excitement regarding that, we'll, we'll, we'll leave them nameless. Um, but there are some legitimate concerns about that, and, and I don't know how we bring that up to the vector control. Um, there were some concerns, they, they stated that there were, they were spraying because of some backyard. Breeding mosquitoes, but they also said that when they were spraying, that their spray doesn't reach the backyard. So it's kind of, why are we spraying if we're spraying for backyard mosquitoes, and the spray doesn't reach the backyard? Um, the other thing is, is with that area there that it was specific to. I would be. I, I think we need to look into that canal there, and they need to inspect that to see if that's, because mosquitoes are from standing water. You have that canal that's right there, there's nowhere else in Eastville that they're getting positive tests, other than down by the river, where there's standing water, up by the canal. If they're going into the canal to treat, then, or to correct the problem, then we're never gonna really correct the problem, so I don't know if there's any other ways. Um, that we can look at. The other thing too with it is, is, um, the education on the vector control side was very. Uh, limited, um, when residents asked about the education. Uh, they, the vector control put it back on the residents, saying that you can go out and you can pass out flyers, and you can educate people, and you can do this, rather than. I think that's probably, vector control's responsibility to educate, not residents' responsibility to educate, so I don't know if those things can maybe be brought up. At the next vector control meeting, just to. Voice our concerns and see what we can do.
My suggestion would be that for people that really are concerned about. Uh, that type of situation, they should come to a meeting. It's the, uh, third Thursday of every month. And, uh, voice your concerns, I mean, we have vector ecologists that are wel- you know, they'll, they welcome the, uh, questions. Uh, they're, they're always happy to talk about what, what they're doing, and, uh, we can also have somebody from vector control come up here and give us a presentation.
Did they give a recent presentation? Do you know? Because they said.
There was a, a vector control, uh, a, a presentation in the last six months, I believe.
Okay.
A- a- and, and just so you know, everything that they do in our city, we also push out through our social media. So i- if people want to be informed about what's happening on their streets, or how to reach out with vector control, uh, we publish everything on our social media channels. As well as our E- Eastville Newsletter, um, and, and, and get that information out. And so if you're not connected with us, i- i- it'd be a good thing to be connected with us.
No, it's not a matter of whether or not it's getting done, it's kind of how to avoid it. Um, how to prepare for all those kind of things, not just announcements of it being done.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and they, um, when they have the traps out there, they'll often get a hit, you know, they'll take it in and something tests for West Nile, or. Uh. What's the other one that, uh, from, that's popular in Brazil right now? Um. Zika, yeah, you know, there's, there's been numerous, uh, cases throughout the country and, and within the state of California. Fortunately, we haven't been impacted, uh, in our area that much this year. But it's, uh, the, the way it, it tends to have peaks and valleys, so next year could be entirely different than this year. And when they, when they, uh, grab a mosquito that ends up testing positive, they're, you know, they want to do an immediate response, so that's why. There may be that, that gap, or there's, there's not a lot of public education, because they're not gonna wait. And then, you know, arrange to get people out there, they want to get out there and spray the affected area and try to knock it down, because the last thing we want is. You know, obviously, a human case.
Yeah, okay, I will be sure to pass on the information.
Thank you, sir.
Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Um, there was a Western Riverside County Programs Subcommittee meeting for. RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission, took place on Monday, um, not a lot, uh, was controversial, in fact, it was. Crazy fast meeting, um, I do want to go back, though, League of California Cities, um. So the event that took place, it is the annual fundraiser, um, that the league does, in fact. The Riverside County Division for the League of California Cities, uh, produces one of the, the largest amounts of money. That goes back to City PAC, um, that's where these fundraising dollars go towards, um, a- at this golf tournament. And, um. The answer to the question, how, how'd I do, I did horrible, uh, I just stopped counting in terms of my score at golf. Uh, but I was there supporting the cause, and as for Skag, uh, Tuesday, there was a, an RFP. Meeting, and it, um, the, we received, um, applicants, and we reviewed those applicants. And I don't know if that information is public yet, so I'm not gonna report out on it, because it was all closed session, so. We will, I'll let you know next time.
Thank you. Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
Nothing to report.
JCSD Parks Commission.
Yeah, nothing to report.
Finance Committee.
Same thing, nothing to report.
All right, any other comments from the council? Councilmember plot?
Thank you, I, I do have, uh, one other comment, um, in fact, it was actually a comment that Michael Connor had, uh. It goes back about two council meetings, it goes about a month ago, he had mentioned, one particular part of his comment was mentioning about, um. The Waste Management Contract, and I know we are, myself and Josh are now looking, um, we're part of the Waste Holler. Negotiations ad hoc committee, that's, I think, that's the title, that's what you call it, but, uh, we're looking to begin negotiations, but i- in this process. He brought up, in the public comment, he brought up something I think we probably need to look at in our current contract, to see. To see if maybe there's something we can look at, even. At this point now, because I think it's important, and that is, if a property goes delinquent. Right, and not, is not paying the Waste Management bill, that the city is able to put that, uh, on their property tax roll. And that currently, we're not doing that, and there was a change in the, there was a change to that original agreement through an addendum made in two thousand thirteen. And I, I think it'd be good for us to look at that and make that agenda item, and see if that, what are the pros and cons in doing that? And to take a look at that, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good point he does bring up, and, and that's something we could probably look at. Uh, regardless of, you know, negotiating through whichever waste holler we go, with, you know, all the different types of waste haulers, but I think at this point, we can. At least maybe start working, or at least come up with a report, maybe, uh, work with, uh, Waste Management in particular, because it's their contract. And see if there's something that we can just amend or not, depending on what happens in council discussions, so I'd like to kind of see that come to the table, if we can.
Do we have a consensus on that coming?
Yeah, that, that, that is correct, though, it used to be that, uh, there would be a, uh, a lien.
Yeah.
And then it was changed, so, and I just want to thank everybody for the, uh, birthday wishes too, thank you, it is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Uh, one last thing that I have is, during the Business Success Roundtable that we had, there was a discussion on. Um, just from the, a multitude of businesses that were there, a discussion on making Eastville a healthy Eastville. Um, just putting together some sort of group, if it's an ad hoc committee that we can do, or something just to start working with the businesses. Um, on a temporary thing, just to see what happens, if it is something that we pursue, continue to do, but making something set so that. Um, we can work with the businesses and some of these business leaders to start putting together, if it's. Um, events, if it's challenges, or whatever it may be, within the community, um, to just promote a more. Healthy Eastville, um, so that was something that they asked about if we could do, um, I think, at the time. Correct me if I'm wrong, council, or Mayor Proton plot, but we are in favor of that, and, um. I think we'd be more than happy to, uh, be in support to having something like that come back as an agenda item.
Absolutely.
If the council. Would approve of that, and then we can ask staff to work on details of how we do that, and then we can bring it back. That would be great. If there is nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting, and the next meeting of the Eastville City Council will be on October ninth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty PM. This meeting is now adjourned.